And gentlemen, we are going to resume where we left off. I'll remind anybody in the audience, if you haven't fed your meter, it may be time. On that note, let's talk about parking.
So Commissioner, if I may, Mayor, I should say, if I may, let me go back and wrap request number three and finalize that one. I will appreciate the opportunity to go back on a couple comments, questions that were asked before. There was statement or comment about the users of those facilities, of parking space at the Fourth Street and in the downtown area. For clarity, we, the employee-only section, accommodates employees from the agencies that have offices at the GCC. So that means obviously county offices, but it means as well tax collector and property appraiser. Okay? And that goes for the GC, for the governmental center garage and the Fourth Street parking lot. The judicial center garage accommodates employees, county as well, and those employees that are from courts administration, state attorney and public defender. And then the parking lot just next to the public defender, state attorney's building, accommodates just state attorney and public defender. So hopefully that provides some level of clarity. I would like then, again, for final context, our recommendation regarding Fourth Street parking lot is that we have other users planned. We can certainly, under the prime ordinance and the PPM, work with the DDA, and we wouldn't need a competitive process to enter into an agreement. If that results in the direction we received today, I would like the opportunity to highlight that we foresee, when we come back with the agreement, that we will need to accommodate additional resources to monitor that operation overnight. The employee-only section is a gated area. We control the software and hardware, right? So that's access that we wouldn't like to put out there because on it, we rely on it to ensure the continuity of our operations. So that means we will need to have staff coverage, be it by an additional staff member or by having someone on call that could troubleshoot any issues. So that-
Isme, can I just ask you just to clarify for me for a second? Are you saying the same process that we originally spoke about in case one for South County Civic Center where it's either 90 days or an RFP is holding, or is it, we're in a different process because the DDA is a governmental entity?
DDA being a governmental entity, it will be similar to the city of West Palm Beach. We can just enter into a direct agreement. So it's a matter of sitting down and refining what it should look like, what should be the conditions and, you know, the provisions of that agreement.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that in mind, I'm going to go ahead and transition to Eric. Again, we have four requests that deals with the convention center garage. Before he goes into that topic, I would like however to highlight that the convention garage, center garage provides for very special operations, is not our typical county facilities. And therefore, the general manager, Dave Anderson, is also here with us, and I'm pretty sure he is the best one positioned to speak about operations on a daily basis. That said, Eric, the floor is yours.
Yes, and I promise I will try and be very quick on this item. The convention center garage, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, was built to accommodate the eventual expansion and build-out of the convention center facility. The garage includes a total of 2,648 parking spaces. And that is in response to existing programming and a variety of potential future programming that could occur on that site at build-out. So essentially, what you see today is not a full utilization of that garage because we simply have not completed the full construction program of that site. We do anticipate upon full build-out, all of those parking spaces will be needed. And that essentially is the crux of the entire argument or position, is that in the future, there certainly will be complete reliance on that facility for site development and programming. And if we create any long-term expectations for public parking at that facility, it's going to be very challenging in the future to remove that expectation. I will conclude there. If there's anything, Isme, you want to-
Are you relying upon the Hilton using that spot? Or are you saying that this is going to be used by convention renters?
So we have an approved plan with the city of West Palm Beach that would double the size of the existing building. We have not completed programming. We don't know exactly what the future program will be, but in the very least, it will be essentially a doubling of the existing convention center footprint.
I would like to build on that, and now that we have Dave in the area, to highlight the following. I think that from the operational perspective, and when we go back into the history about what the convention center has been, it opened operations in 2004. In 2016, the hotel was built, and in 2017, the parking garage was built. And one of the key considerations at the time was the ability that the garage will provide the convention center to book multiple events at the same time. So to the extent that we may reserve a given number of spaces for a separate use not related to the convention center, it will have the net effect, from the facility's perspective, I believe, to hinder the ability that then our operator has to be able to book multiple events. And I think his success is somehow framed by the ability to have a profitable operation in 2018, 2019. I'm referring to the pre-COVID years for obvious reasons. I believe Dave is certainly back on track now that we are hopefully in the tail and have COVID. So with that said, if you allow me, can Dave provide additional insight as to the operation?
Commissioner Bernard would like to ask a question, then we will have Dave make his presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I know for me, for the convention center garage, I'd like to get a full report from, from Dave, you know, whenever, in a Word or Excel sheet, from the, since Isme mentioned that it was operational in 2017, I'd like to know exactly what's the percentage of the, since you said there's 2,648 parking spaces, I'd like to get an average of how much of that parking space has been used since it's been open, so now we can know whether or not this parking garage is being utilized properly.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I just have a question. The surface parking there, we're not talking about that at all right now. That's for your build-out of the convention center. But until that's done, what is being done with the surface parking?
It's part of the convention center operations. It's part of the areas that Dave manages on his day-to-day operations.
All right. You're on.
Good afternoon, everybody. I don't have a presentation, but I'll kind of run you through a brief history. As Isme said, when we opened up in 2004, there were two things that I didn't have. One was a hotel, and the other was a convention center garage. So we went through probably the first 13 years of operating the building at a deficit. But as most of you know, in January 2016, the convention center hotel opened, and then in November of 2017, the parking garage opened. So starting in 2018, we actually ran at an operating surplus. So 2018, 2019, in 2020, we were on our way to a record year, and then COVID hit in March of 2020. But in, as of May of this year, we're actually back on track to 2019 numbers. Our business is outstanding. And as Isme said, one of the biggest challenges that we had when we first opened up is we had a flat lot in the back, and it only had 1,100 spaces. So we were losing a ton of business because we couldn't layer business on. So if we do a big art show, that's the only thing we could actually do because we didn't have any parking. So we couldn't do any meetings, any food and beverage events, any small other meetings. So we spent a ton of time with Audrey, Verdina, Eric, and a number of people at the county facilities department, designing the garage to make sure that when we designed it, we did it in a way so we could actually layer on business. So, and we also built the garage with the premise of building it for the expansion as well, because to go back and actually add on to the garage four, five, six, seven years later would probably be double or triple the cost. So it was a great move by the county to actually build the garage of its size at that time. So immediately upon, again, opening of the hotel and the garage, our deficit went from like 863 in 2016 down to 300, and then suddenly in 18, we were a profit of $1.5 million, and then in 19, we were a profit of almost $900,000. And to give you an idea, in May of this year, we netted more money in May of this year than all of 2018. We netted 900 grand this past May. So again, it's a mix of convention business, short-term business, but it allows us to do multiple events at the same time. So the garage really isn't a moneymaker for us. The garage was a critical asset that we had to build and drop into the campus, which is what I call it. So you have the convention center, you have the hotel, and then you have the convention center garage. And we strategically put it in that left-hand corner so we'd be able to, one, expand going directly south when we're ready to do that, but then also, we could use Rosemary and Alabama for the in and the out. So that's why you see in and outs for both. So again, Eric is correct that we're not utilizing the garage to its fullest potential, but that was never the plan. But I will say though, that we do multiple events at the same time. So we have cars going 24/7 basically in and out of that lot seven days a week. And it's been a great addition. And if you see it, it's one of the most beautiful garages that you'll actually ever see, which was something we talked about because we want to make sure that's the front door of the convention center, even though people come in off Okeechobee. When you come off of Rosemary and you turn to our entryway, you see the garage and you see our new glass entryway, and it's phenomenal. So, but happy to answer questions.
Okay. Before I recognize the Vice Mayor, of the 2,648 spaces, what would you say the average usage is, or what would you say even the maximum usage has been?
Probably maximum, I would say 1,800 to 2,000.
So there's clearly at least 264, I mean, 648 spots right now that you've never used.
Well, not, I wouldn't say never, like cars park wherever they park, so-
I mean, there's going to be gaps.
But the other thing is, is I would probably take the usable number down to 2,400. There's probably about 240 spots that are those compact spots on corners when you turn that could be used if we really needed to, but we really don't take that into consideration when we're doing events.
But the 2,000 is your max, and what do you, what do you think is usually being used in that?
It really depends on the events. It could be anywhere from 500 parking spaces to 1,500 or 1,800. The thing you have to also remember, which is not accountable in the numbers, and I'll try to do that for you, Commissioner Bernard, is that we park staff there, we park exhibitors there, we park the staff of all of our companies that work there. So security companies, cleaning companies, anybody that works there, we put them in that lot as well. Because the flat lot, which you asked about before, the flat lot is actually used for all the truck traffic. So our business now has turned from 80/20, short-term, to 80/20, long-term. So most of the events we're doing have a ton of exhibitors, a ton of trucks, a ton of traffic. So all of the trailers and everything are stored in that flat lot. Like, we literally have one of the best setups in the country. Plus, you take the square, I want to get the name right, the square across the street, and you take Clematis, you take the Intercoastal, there is, and the airport three miles away, there's almost nothing like it. And we're set up for expansion as well.
Very good. And one last question, I guess, for a county administrator. Where's that profit going?
Goes back to the county.
It goes back into-
TDC.
It goes back into the bed tax funds.
Oh, okay.
Because that's what we, we only spend bed tax funds for the convention center. It goes in.
So it's a revolving-
It's, that's correct. We make sure we've got enough maintenance, we got renewal and replacement, we pay for baseball stadiums out of their, their debt service, we pay the agencies out of those funds, et cetera.
Okay.
And we are doing exceptionally well. I heard this morning, we're on a record-breaking mission here for 22.
Yeah, 900,000.
Yeah, and typically, convention centers lose money, but we're probably one of the best performing financially, this size convention centers in the country.
And of course, having more rooms and a hotel adjacent would make it even better.
Absolutely. Yeah, the impact of, the impact of a consumer show, you know, could be $100,000. The impact of a conference could be 600, $700,000, not including the room nights, airfare, rental cars, and everything else. It just, there's no comparison. We love our short-term business, and it's kind of the layer-in whenever we have openings, but it's really about, I mean, you saw Bitcoin, you probably did on the news when it was here. I mean, they basically took over the city, you know, for five days, and it was 6,000 people at our building all day, and then at night, they were everywhere. And that's the business that we actually want.
I'm sure West Palm Beach wants it too. Vice Mayor?
Good morning, or good afternoon. So you mentioned you have an operating surplus. Does that include though, are you responsible for paying the debt on the garage?
No. No, yeah, no, the debt service on the garage or the convention center is not included in my number. I'm just talking operating, annual operating.
Okay. All right.
Want me to answer that? The other, there is a fund set up specifically to pay debt service.
No, but when we were talking about a surplus, I'm trying to understand the surplus, what actually gets costed in when we say we have a surplus at the convention center? So the fact that there's a garage associated with it that falls on the taxpayers is not included in calculating the operating cost, or the operating profit of the convention center?
The, the, all of the garage, the complex, the convention center complex, our baseball stadiums, et cetera, are all paid out of the tourist development tax. There are no Avalorm dollars associated with it.
I understand. I understood, I understood that, but I was just trying to get to whether or not it generates a positive income in, so in this, in this comment, we don't have enough data in front of us to know that it generates a positive net for the, for the county. Because you have to apportion the cost of the garage, add in the revenues from the garage that it generates as well, to understand, and if there's any other debt associated with the building itself, I assume we pay the O and M. That's not, you're not, you're not being charged, do you pay for the O and M of the building when you talk about your-
We have an annual budget, that is, but it's TDC funds.
It's TDC funds, so when you say you're operating, you had an operating profit, and I know we're getting out of the, and I don't, I want to talk about parking, so, but since it did come up, and so let's, I'll do a different discussion at a different time-
Okay.
Because I don't want to hold my colleagues up here.
Just a quick one though. When he says a $900,000 profit, he's not including all of the cost. He's just not costing us any additional dollars, as he stated. Most convention centers run at a deficit.
Okay.
So that 900,000 is not necessarily a profit. It really goes back in to help with operating expenses and all the other costs associated with operating that facility.
Okay. Go, just, in just following up on Commissioner Bernard's request, I would rather see, and if you could share the data with me, I'd rather, because an average gives a good snapshot, but it's not the reality of what the daily utilization looks like there. Is that garage open every day, by the way?
No, it's an event-driven garage. I mean, we're, we've got events going almost every day, but we basically open and close the garage based on event schedules. We're not a public garage.
So the public, if, even if the public wanted to pay your hourly rate, they, if you're not having a regular event going on there, they don't have access to that?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so I'd like to, I'd like to better understand just the operation of the garage for future, but that, and so I'd like a little more detail on, I guess, on an in-and-out basis to really see during, because people can come and go during, during the day, so you don't exactly know, I mean, you would know how many spaces are actually being occupied at any hour of the day.
Yeah, I mean, the systems need to be upgraded, but yeah, I mean, we, we have a manager there, and we kind of know the in and outs, so we have an idea of that. We try to do as much tracking by event as possible, but again, the reason why we built the larger garage is so we could layer events on and do multiple layers in the building at the same time. So we don't, we don't really stop everybody on Rosemary and say, hey, what are you attending?
Right. Well, I mean, I was thinking back as we were preparing for the meeting today, and thinking back like in the month of June, we had a number of very large events in the evenings, right? So it would show utilization. We had, also had the hurricane conference there, beginning of the month.
Florida attractions, like, yeah, we, it was, business is great.
Yeah, so, so last month was, was really good, and then the next month, you know, maybe not. And so looking at an average-
Yeah, we're, you know, when I first opened up, because I started here in April of 2003, when we first opened the building, we were probably running, you know, four good months a year, but we're probably running nine to 10 good months a year. Like, it's, it's just a tremendously positive story. And we just, we built an incredible campus, but we need, we do need to add on a hotel, and we do need to expand the building.
If you expand the building, what are you going to do with the trucks in the back, then?
Marshaling offsite.
But I thought that was one of our benefits of having our current campus, is that we can put all those trucks back there.
Yeah, well, most, most, but along with expanding, we'll probably do two and a half times the number of docks. So we'll be able to keep most of the trucks onsite moving forward, but we do marshal, most of the big buildings around the country marshal.
And you're not sending them into District Two to park on the streets, right?
Only if they metered.
Thanks.
All right. Howard, before we go much further, can you tell us if revenue generating rentals in that garage would violate our bond?
Well, yes. My understanding is that if they exceed a certain amount, they would, and that would render them taxable.
Well, you've just sort of opened up the question. What is that certain amount? It's a, I mean, if it's ancillary, if we have, you know-
10%?
This particular request in front of us, is that going to be-
Sherry Brown.
A critical amount?
I'm sure she's going to come up and address it.
She.
Sherry Brown, OFMB Director. So the IRS has a rule. We have a tax-exempt bond on our convention center garage, and they want to look and see, is 10% of your use going to a private entity? So if we want to lease out 10%, so that's over 2,600 spaces to somebody, that would say, okay, yes, you do have a use problem. And then they want to know, do you have a revenue issue also? And if we have 10% of all the revenues generated from the parking garage coming from that lease, then that would generate the second part of the IRS test. And we could have an issue that would require us to refund the tax-exempt bonds as taxable.
So you're saying, okay, I think we said there was 2,648 spaces there. So you're saying anything more than 264 spaces could put us into jeopardy as far as those bonds?
Correct. And when we say in jeopardy, it means we just would have to go out and refund the bonds as a taxable bond. And right now, the rates are a little bit higher than when we issued this bond, so it would cost, if we did it today, about $220,000 a year more in debt service, so.
Certainly, you don't want to add to the expense of our county. Commissioner Sacks, you recognized?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all you've done.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Making this a real success story, especially after COVID. I know you worked very hard on that. So basically, what it comes down to is that with the success rate you have in the convention center, and with our hotel, and the possibility that we will be expanding the convention center and/or expanding the hotel, we really cannot afford to lease out additional parking spaces in that parking lot.
Yeah, if you add in other elements to the equation, I think Commissioner McKinley said, like, opening the box, you know, from an expense standpoint, you know, we'd go 24-hour security, we'd hire another manager. I mean, I can think of, I don't know, a quarter million dollars in expenses that I'd probably add on just by turning it into a normal parking lot. The other thing is, is that there's been a number of requests over the years, so this would open the Pandora's Box as it relates to, you know, a number of people thinking that they can get in there. And I think, you know, Verdina and I agree that, you know, there's the immediate need right around the building, which is the Hilton, which again, is also on fire from a business standpoint, which is fantastic because they're our partner. So I think if there's, if there's anybody to try to assist occasionally, which we do, it's the Hilton. So if the Hilton calls me, and they, and this is like within two days, and says, hey, you know, we've got a big dinner, but we're sold out, you know, can we work with you? We work with them to try to make that happen, you know, to keep Alabama, Rosemary, Okeechobee uncongested, to be able to get cars off of that area. So we're doing some of that now. But then the addition of the new hotel, I think a critical piece will be parking as it relates to, will the hotel build their own parking, or will they try to negotiate, you know, with Verdina and the county as it relates to try to get some of the spots within there? So I think some of these answers need to be answered first, and then plus the design of our expansion before we start going in other directions. Because no matter which direction I go, I'm going to have to invest a lot of money between hard equipment and manpower, and I'd rather just have one direction versus kind of going this way and then having to go back that way.
And your one direction has worked out very well, in terms of the success.
Yeah, you know what? It's, yeah.
Why, why make it a semi-public parking spaces for Palm Beach Atlantic University? Let's just keep it the way it is because it's contributed to the success of our convention center and the possible expansions in the near future.
Yeah, and if we start losing spaces, then again, we're going to start going back into the situation before when we had the flat lot, where we're going to have to start turning away multiple layers of business. And we're just in too good of a situation right now, both, both for long-term and the economic impact to the community, but also short-term. You know, like, I, we just got a call from a lunch event that I think most of you have been to, and they want to look at multiple dates, but they only book 30 days out, and they usually need like 700 parking spaces.
Yeah.
And we've been working with them for years, and they want to look at us for multiple events, high-profile speakers. So that's the kind of stuff we don't even think twice about now because we have enough parking to do it, along with a conference that would be in the exhibit hall at the same time.
I understand. Thank you. Thank you.
Let me understand what you just said.
Yes, sir.
You're not saying that if we entertain this request by Palm Beach Atlantic, it would cost us $4 million in additional costs?
No, but I, but I can tell you that if we start going into like a normal operating lot, it'd be, hard equipment would be over a half million dollars that we'd have to invest to change what we have now, and then also manpower, managers, security, cleaning, capital improvements, at least a quarter million, so probably 750, but 250 a year. So absolutely.
Isme, can you let us know a little bit about this request by Palm Beach Atlantic? What exactly were they asking?
So we- Back in 2020, and that's included as part of the agenda item, we monitor the applications that take place in the area, and we had reached out to Palm Beach Atlantic before stating, we see the development, we're a little bit concerned about potential reliance on the garage. At that time, they responded back saying, we will not rely on your garage. And it's my understanding, based on conversations with the county administrator, that recently they have informally requested again consideration of the possibility of using that space. Back in 2020, what caused us to reach out was that they were disposing of a property that previously had a function in providing parking spaces to their students. And Eric, feel free to jump in.
Sure. I don't have a lot of detail. As I recall, it was several acres of the overall campus that they were rezoning in order to ready it for disposal for private development. At that point in time, the property was committed, as Isme mentioned, to a parking purpose. So it simply begs the question, if you lose the parking and you have this parking need, where are you going to satisfy that demand? Without land, it's very challenging to provide parking capacity.
All right. All right, we got four requests in front of us. Do we want to take these one at a time?
Yes.
I think we do, which is what I was going to do before. Now we're willing to do it. All right. Let's go back to number one. Let's refresh everyone's recollection. That's Andre, our good friend and artist colony over in Delray Beach, adjacent to the Palm, the Delray-
South County.
County site, administrative complex. All right. Who here has a problem? Commissioner McKinley, what would you like to tell you?
On that first one on the South County Administration Center, I'd like to offer that we do a 90-day temporary lease. I think we need to decide on the commencement date, maybe starting September 1st or September 15th. I don't, first, September 1st. And doing that 90-day lease to give staff time to prepare an RFP so that we then put it out for RFP to meet the statutory requirements of procurement.
All right. So I have a motion from Commissioner McKinley to direct staff to go ahead and draft a 90-day lease with the requisite liability addressed, and then to set up an RFP to determine if there are others who are also interested, whether it's going to be a sole interest. And I say- County Administrator?
Yes, we hear you loud and clear, and we'll get that done. But I do want to just put this word of caution. Isme and her staff, we've got a number of number-one priorities, and she is really swamped. She's never going to say that, but I do not want her to wake up one morning and quit on me. So I just want to put that word of caution out there, that it may take a little longer than those 90 days to get that RFP out.
Well, I don't think we're starting in the 90 days. Well, I don't think we're starting in the 90 days immediately. We're starting in 90 days October 1st, you said?
September 1st.
September 1st. So there's a little bit of play in there.
I am just putting it on the table because I know that we've also got the convention center stuff going. We've got, she's following up on your South County Admin, which is a major priority. And then there are some other priorities that the board has also given us. That's all. We'll work it, we'll try to work it out.
Mr. Mayor, if I may conclude, I think that that would satisfy the immediate needs of the requister. And if it, if the RFP spilled out a little bit beyond that, it would be okay.
All right, we are, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to give it to Commissioner Bernard, takes the second. All right, Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
If I could suggest something, to ease the workload of our staff, why doesn't the good lawyers over here with Andre Design put a contract together and let our legal department review it? I'm sure they're going to have every T crossed so that it doesn't have to initiate...
Probably defer to Isme, probably would prefer to start with her own contract.
So our preference will be, if approved by this board, the county, as any governmental entity, has a number of clauses and articles that need to be on those contracts. I think our experience here has been that whenever we let a third party draft our contract, it will not pass muster with county attorney. And I have the county attorney looking at me and my colleague to our left. So to the extent that is possible, and we certainly appreciate the help, but it might be faster if we use our templates a bit forward.
Commissioner McKinley? You're still light? Nope? Okay, good. All right, I think we have some unanimity on this one, so let's get a vote. All in favor of the motion to have the 90 days starting September 1st with an RFP thereafter? Do you want to speak? Okay, I see a six to oh. Okay, we are moving forward now to items two. Vice Mayor?
So I'll go ahead and move approval of item number two for 429 Park Place as recommended by staff.
My second.
I have a second, I have a... Motion by Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, six-zero. We got that one. All right. We seem to be on a roll here. Let's try for number three. Anybody want to make a motion on the Fourth Street parking lot, number three?
I have a...
I'll go ahead and make a motion to move forward directing staff to work with West Palm Beach Downtown Development Authority to make available parking spaces on our Fourth Street parking lot.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. I have several lights. I'll go to Commissioner McKinley, then Commissioner Kerner.
Yes, and I apologize, Isme, if you've already answered this question, but having spent five years parking in that parking lot myself, it is gated with a pass, a security pass. So how would you accommodate that and the hours?
That currently, we have staff from 6:00, 5:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Yes, it's a gated operation. We access that with a badge to accommodate the DDA use. I will most probably come back with the agreement and a request to have one additional or two additional positions to cover nights and weekends because we are not providing access to our software that controls approval and entry. And we will need to provide support for any hardware malfunction or anything like that. So we will need that additional support to be included as part of the overall framework for operations. We will need to provide them badges, and they will be responsible for managing those badges and providing the badges to whichever employee on the private side is going to receive access. And then we will program those badges so that they can only be utilized on given timeframes.
Well, that gets them in, but that...
Certainly.
It doesn't necessarily mean that the car is removed after those hours. So they would essentially have county employee badges and the same access.
Access, certainly.
And knowing, having family members in the hospitality industry, knowing that their shifts vary, I would assume then that all of the employees who are working shifts in those entities would have to get one because one day they might work lunch, and then the badge wouldn't work at lunchtime. The next day, they might have the dinner shift. So you would have to badge, that's going, and so that's all going out to Vista Center then to be photographed and get the parking badges?
So we manage those badges from parking section here, from within the building, they are at the garage, their office. We will handle that from here, but your statement as to the need to issue the badges and have accountability on where those badges eventually end up and are activated, deactivated, is certainly a key point, will be a key point in the operation.
And how are we guaranteed that they're used for employees while they're working and not just for someone who's got the day off that wants to come downtown and go out?
Very different than what we do for county employees and other agencies that have their employees parking our facilities. When you register, it goes, it ties to your employee badge, and it also ties to your license plate. So we have, as employees, an obligation to communicate all the information regarding our vehicles and the like, right? So if I decide not to move my vehicle from the parking lot today, someone can actually identify, okay, that's Isme's vehicle. That's a challenge we may have, depending on where the badges end up, you know, and being able to tie one to the other. Those details, Commissioner, at this point, I cannot provide you exact answers because we will need to work it out. That's not a framework that we have as of today in place. It's not there.
And given your workload that was just previously discussed, how much time do you think that you need to work through those issues if this were to move forward?
If this were to move forward, I will very respectfully request at least three months to figure out a process to make sure that our hardware can accommodate the programming, that we have a framework to issue the badges, who's going to be responsible, who's going to return those badges. One of the challenges that we see in other operations is, for whatever reason, an employee is terminated and the badge doesn't return to our hands, until I don't have it back, I don't know that that employee has been terminated. So that access remain active. So we will need to work through all those details. And I, again, right now, I don't have the answers because our framework is not for public operation on that side, it's for employee-only. If you were to compare that with the public section, it's open, it has no gates. We work through a pay-on foot, which is a very different framework of operations.
What we're asking for is a public side. All we're asking for is a public side.
No, DDA's request was for the employee's side.
No, the public's.
That's not what I have, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Clemente, come on up and just clarify what your ask is.
Yes, good afternoon. Rafael Clemente, Executive Director of Downtown Development Authority. All we're asking for is the unrestricted access side. If it's the controlled access side, hearing what I just heard, I wouldn't even try this. It's the unrestricted access side.
Thank you.
So Rafael, we had a call, Ms. Bugaira and I had a call with you, and through that conversation, we actually talked about the gated access and everything else about the employee's side and the conversation about that side of operations. So as of today, it was our understanding, based on that conversation and on the email sent, that it was for the employee only.
It wasn't for the employee only. It was, if that was also available and it was attainable, then that would be fantastic. But my request was initially for anything, and the suggestion was the Fourth Street lot and the most easily attainable piece of whatever that is. I didn't understand the entire detail of the restricted access side until just now. But frankly, if that was the hurdles we all had to clear and understanding completely staff's concerns with that, I would withdraw my request, quite honestly, because it would be too much, it wouldn't be worth the squeeze. But just the unrestricted side and whatever else that is unrestricted and available would be a wonderful step forward. Thank you.
Right, and just Mr. Vice Mayor, for your knowledge, when he met with my chief of staff, he indicated he wanted additional parking for hospitality and hotel workers by using the Fourth Street lot and the garage. So those were related to my comments earlier.
All right, well, I think we've clarified what the ask is right now. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just, yeah, and I just want to clarify that. I think in, quite frankly, this has gotten way complicated. So the simplest thing would be to have hanging tags for the cars when they go in that designate that they can be there from 6:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. or whatever, and after that, they're eligible to be towed. It's very visible, somebody can come through, drive through and see it. We do it when, I know we do it when we have people from Sunfest and utilize a lot and things like that. And then we do have the, I mean, in the bottom of the garage, there are that, you know, there are spaces at night that are open that are, you know, and you could use the same hangtag system there if so desired. But I think the request that was initially made was for those open spaces that are open to the public now, but to be able to buy them and, you know, buy passes in bulk to be able to legally park vehicles there.
We will then manage it from the public open side. I just went back in my email to May 10, and the request started with employee-only side, Fourth Street employee parking lot. So with that said, we will readdress the path forward and reengage then for the public section of it.
And your timeline on that, you still need three months?
I will, we will aim to deliver it faster, Mayor, if possible, but we, right now, we do not have any type of agreements for this. So please give me the opportunity to regroup with my staff, with my colleagues, and put a framework to make it happen.
Very good. All right, I believe we have a motion on the table, or do...
I think that I thought I moved it.
Let's just make sure we have the motion.
Okay, so I moved, I moved that we direct staff and...
Just restated for the clerk.
Moved that we direct staff to work with the DDA to come up with a plan to utilize a part of the Fourth Street parking lot for their use in our off-hours.
The open spaces, not the restricted spaces. And I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor, all opposed? You have a question. I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to ignore you.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. Just so I can understand if we authorize this, certainly there will be less capacity in that public parking, open access area, but would this motion preclude the public from utilizing those spaces in addition to the employees? Like, if they just wanted to pay to park?
So DDA employees or those that they're intending to benefit can park in the facility right now on the public side. So if we're being directed to enter into an agreement, we're basically reserving the spaces for their use. Otherwise, we're not doing anything different than what we have. If we're reserving the spaces, then that space is reserved for their use, not for anyone else. So may I request a little bit of clarity then, where we are going?
Let me just, let me finish my comments so that Commissioner Weiss, who's taken the lead on this, can understand my concern. The lot is able to be used right now by hospitality staff, probably very cheaply, I assume.
That is correct.
This may have the unintended consequence, and I've been contacted by Father Nester Rod, I think it was Rodriguez from St. Anne's, who, whose constituency is having trouble paying, quite honestly, the, to be candid with you, the raised parking fees that have been imposed by West Palm Beach. So they were looking to utilize that lot, which I think they could lawfully do as long as they pay the fee. If this is going to have the effect of providing exclusivity to the DDA to control that parking, I can't get behind it because it's going to push out everyone but who they choose to go into that lot, and that doesn't seem to be equitable.
So let me take a step back because I think, again, in going back to my emails, this request started as a request for the parking lot that is restrained, it's gated, okay? The side of the Fourth Street parking lot, the section that is right now open to the public, is open, okay? So nothing is keeping DDA or any member of the public from going into that section of the parking. It's always open.
Right.
So we wouldn't need an agreement with DDA to continue to operate the way we do. If what they're looking for is to have a reserved space, then yes, we need to change our framework of operations so that they have the ability to rely on, I have five spaces, I'm just using a number for sake of the conversation, I have five spaces that I'm paying the county for and that my employees, whoever it might be, can go ahead and park, and they have certainty that they can park there. If that's what we're talking about, then to reserve the spaces for DDA, I need to keep out other uses because otherwise I will be violating a potential agreement with them, right? So it goes back to the essence about what is, they are, what they're looking for. If they're looking for reserved spaces and the certainty that those spaces will be made available to their clientele, however, that is the fine, then we need an agreement that reserves the spaces for them. If they just want the availability, the availability is there right now, it's open.
The, yeah, so I came into this, this meeting thinking that the emphasis was on the restricted lot. Now that I'm aware that that's not in play, this will have the effect of basically delegating to the DDA who can use that parking lot and who can't. And the only people that will not benefit from this are every member of the public that could use it otherwise. The only persons or peoples that it does benefit are who the DDA decides it would, could park there. So it's, I hate to throw a wrench into this, but it's becoming problematic for me because it'll have the effect of pushing out parishioners and other members of the public that use those spots on the weekend.
Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Isme, is there a way to determine, like, how much of the space is being used and how, maybe we can work with the DDA, and let's say it's 10 spots that they need to reserve or something like that. Can we tell exactly how much of the space is being used on the weekend so in that way we can figure it out?
I don't have that information with me. We can certainly gather the information, make a determination, certainly.
But I don't think we need to, we don't have to use the whole space. You know, we could determine, if we say there's a certain section, 10 spaces or 20 spaces that you determine that's appropriate, then, you know, we would rely on your expertise to determine that. If it's just one space that you determine that's available, then that's one space, so...
Okay.
Because I'm okay with, I don't think we want to provide all of the space to the DDA, but would rely on staff to, you know, determine exactly if it's 10 spaces that are potentially available out of 50, then you can make that available if it's...
That would, that would be better.
Commissioner McKinley?
I'm going to go back to my comments from a few hours ago that I don't think this one's ready for prime time. And after listening to this conversation, I think a better option would be for us to sit down with the partners and figure out a way to offer a discount parking code to hospitality workers that can be used in any of the public parking garages downtown. That would require a partnership with the city. And if there was a way down the park, mobile app, you know, where you could enter in your parking code plus a hospitality worker code or some sort of technology that has to exist, that that would be more beneficial rather than this 6:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. You know, what about the ones who were, what about the Starbucks workers that come in at 5:00 a.m.? They need to find parking too, and this isn't going to help them. So I think the better option would be to kick this back and have a conversation with the city about how to do a discounted rate for our downtown hospitality workers, and then have it come back to us.
Do I hear a substitute motion, Commissioner?
I'm not making a motion, I'm giving staff direction.
But we have a motion on the table. Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner McKinley. At the very initiation of your analysis, Isme, you might have had unguided information, put it that way. So why don't we, why doesn't staff go back, take a look at it? And also, the ideas by Commissioner Bernard are well-taken in terms of seeing how many spaces they need. Let's, let's look at this in a rational way. How many, how many spaces they need, how many spaces we have, how much are they going to pay, how much are we going to make, and how much are really available to the public, which is where we, our first priority should always be, parking spaces for the public. Government employees or hospitality people are private employees, but the public works, public pays us for parking. So the first priority is public. If we have any available spaces that we can lease out to other government employees or to private entities, we'll consider... to private entities, we'll consider it. You can bring it to us and we'll take a look at it. Thank you so much for your work.
I got to dispose of this motion somehow. So Commissioner Kurner, what's your thoughts?
I think, I think just giving staff direction to work with the DDA and try to synergize the, synthesize what this board has said, I think the motion should be pulled back and that be the formal action.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to withdraw my second, so in that way, we give them the opportunity to work it.
Okay, you're withdrawing your second, so the motion is now, unless I get another second, we are.
So then I'd just like to give staff direction to go back and work with the DDA and come on back with us.
All right, I think that has taken care of it.
I'm going to recommend that we also bring the city to the table so the three of us can sit down and work.
Yeah, I think that's perfect. I mean, I think Commissioner McKinley is absolutely right. This is something that needs to be a county, city solution.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so that, that motion went away. All right, I'm hoping that we can dispose of number four real quickly. I just want to tell you that at 2:00, we're going to break for matters by the public. I'm going to say, anybody who is here to discuss the budget, those questions will be deferred until we get to that discussion. So please don't look to have a conversation about the budget during matters by the public. You can if you want to, but I think it's more appropriate to wait until we get to the discussion of the budget a little bit later. We'll get to the towing people, but I, I got to break at 2:00. It's a date, it's a time certain. You think we can get them, all right, wait a minute, let's just dispose of four. Does anybody want to take a motion four, or do we just leave it?
To deny? I, I don't think that.
We're just going to leave it?
Yeah, no action.
No action. All right, we're not going to take any action on four. Okay, let's quickly go to the towing so that we can then.
On the general policy.
What, sorry?
On the general policy for future requests. We also have a motion included on the agenda item, the four individual requests and approval of a general policy moving forward.
Let's come back.
We don't need to do a motion on that.
All right. Clear as mud?
Our, may I?
Yes.
Yes. Our recommendation, Mayor Eric, if you can forward, is that we foresee we will continue to receive this type of request. Therefore, we will appreciate an authorization to have a general policy moving forward. We will continue to review each request that comes for use of parking, of parking facilities used by the county. We will consider the same as long as they do not interfere with planned and approved uses, do not result in a major increase of operating costs, which we can handle to an agreement, right? We call defer those costs to the operating party. That does encumber city, county-owned property and that does not deviate or contradict board-approved policies. So we're saying, recommending, allow us not to consider requests that will have those impacts, and then allow us to consider every single request that comes through based on the primordance.
Is there any problem with?
Mr. Mayor, I know I'm not prepared to support that policy at all.
I'm not either.
All right, let's, let's, obviously, we can't put this to bed yet, so we're going to take a break from this subject. We're going to come back to it. We're going to take one item that the Vice Mayor is going to make a motion to reorder the agenda.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to re, ask to reorder the agenda to hear item 6C1 before we hear matters by the public.
Okay, so we now have item 6C1 before us. This is the public safety item. This is staff recommends a motion to approve preliminary reading and permission to advertise for public hearing on July 28, 2022. This is on a truck, this is on a tow truck ordinance. Does anybody need any additional information?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner McKinley. I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed?
I'm against, so.
Uh, Mayor?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, I'm.
What, what's going on here?
Nothing. We're just reiterating what you just said.
Oh, okay. You're helping the clerks. Stay with me.
Uh, Mayor?
Do I have cards?
You didn't reorder them.
He just reordered.
Go to 6C1.
6C1.
But there was no second on that.
And it wasn't voted on.
All right, let's go back and reorder the agenda. It's made of, the motion by, made by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor, all opposed? Six, zero. It's been reordered. All right, now we have cards on 6C1. I would like to ask if you don't have anything bad to say about this.
It's just a first reading.
Okay, just call them and ask them if they need to come up.
All right, Jim Jennings, if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to, but he's in support of the, the motion, of the agenda item. Crystal Griffin in support. Lillani Burchard in support.
All right, I'm ready to call for a vote.
I will make a motion to approve on preliminary reading and permission to advertise for a public hearing on July 28, 2022 at 9:30, item 5C1, or 6C1.
Commissioner McKinley has made the motion. The Vice Mayor's seconded. All in favor, all opposed?
I'm against.
You're against it?
Yes.
Okay, so it's five to one. All right, we have disposed of it. Aren't you glad you sat here all day waiting for this?
I think they're going to comment.
All right. All right, we're going to now go on to matters by the public, and then we will resume our conversation about parking.
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Goodwood is asking if you'll validate his parking ticket.
Yeah, we're going to give you hangers to put in the car so you don't get tickets. All right, so we're anticipating this is going to be probably about 40 minutes.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, we did? Oh, I thought we were trying to get them home.
Yeah, yeah, we got the towing people home. We got Stephanie that can go home. Oh, you got one more? Okay, sorry.
Mayor, at this time, we have about 45 minutes of matters by the public, so we'll ask everybody that wants to speak to go to the microphone and be prepared to speak. So we'll be calling you simultaneously to make it efficient. Pastor Ray Whitley will be our first public speaker, followed by Jane Justice and then Catherine Quenneville.
When you come up to the microphone, I ask you to please identify yourself just so we know who we're hearing, and please don't be bashful. Come on up.
Pastor Ray Whitley, are you here? Jane Justice, Catherine Quenneville, and then Peter J. Barber is on deck.
Hello, this is Jane Justice. Specific election integrity concerns with Palm Beach County elections were not addressed by the SOE Wendy Satori-Linck at the special BCC meeting in, on June 21st. They are, number one, electronic voting machines known as EVMs are used in Palm Beach County. The Novus Renbeck duplicator is used to duplicate ballots on-site at the SOE facility during elections. Here is a photo of a ballot that was duplicated opposite of the voter choice used, using the Novus Renbeck duplicator. The Renbeck machine indicated Jason Mariner in the green rectangle as the voter choice, but the SOE employee selected Greg Musselwhite even though the machine indicated Mariner. SOE employer, employee cast the ballot opposite of the voter choice. Number two, it took the SOE one and a half hours to locate the original ballot to fix the mistake. Why so long? Duplicate ballots are supposed to track to the original ballot cast. Does our SOE track the original ballot cast with the duplicate as required by law? Number three, on February 17, 2022, at a logic and accuracy tour, a candidate asked the SOE link, what happens if the duplicator makes a mistake? She replied, human beings make the final decision. In other words, duplicated ballots are subject to human oversight at our SOE. Number four, at the same February 17, 2022 logic accuracy test, Wendy Satori-Linck said she installed the Novus Renbeck duplicator for greater transparency. People aren't hunched over the ballots like they used to be. Before, SOE link bipartisan cooperation and oversight was placed in order, placed to review ballots for duplication in a slow and careful, respectful manner. Number five, Florida statute 101.56144A, the duplication of ballots must happen in the presence of at least one canvassing board member. SOE employee duplicated ballots without a canvassing board present on January 7, 2022. SO link was also absent, and there is literally no oversight at all. Number six, SOE employee duplicated ballots, duplicated ballots with the screen turned off during a public observation hours, January 2, 2022. Number seven, observers required, inquired why the screen was shut off during public observation hours. SOE employee Richard said, what, when nobody's here, we don't turn the screen on. We do it all the time, January 2.
Okay, your, your time has expired, and I thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much.
I would just like to make a comment, and you're all welcome to speak, but I want to just reiterate what was said at our last matters by the public. The supervisor of elections is an independently elected official of Florida. She answers to the voters and the governor. And as you'll recall, the governor removed the last SOE because he felt that there were some issues, and it would be up to the governor to make a decision. This body is not in a position to give any direction to the supervisor of elections. All we can do is withhold funding. We can't give her direction. So, but you are all welcome to let us know how you feel about the supervised elections, but there is nothing that we can do.
We can't afford.
Thank you, Mayor. Following Catherine Quenneville, we'll have Peter J. Barber and then Christine Hemphill.
We understand your position and thank you for the opportunity to illuminate our concerns. Wendy Observer Link, Wendy Satori-Linck asked a public observer to leave the facility for attempting to photograph in descriptions. The sunshine law allows photos and videos, and so did our previous SOE. Number nine, SOE link prohibits the public from taking any photographs. Link cites SB 90, which prohibits the copy of signatures to justify a no-fotos enforcement in the facility. A copy is not a photo. The sunshine law permits photos and videos, and they were allowed by this SOE before Link. Number 10, if photographing signatures is prohibited by law, then the SOE also violates the said law by scanning all signatures for review of signatures made by the canvassing board. Number 11, SOE-written reply says the SOE utilizes paper ballots. This is misleading. Paper ballots must be digitally processed to count. The unspoken fact is, paper ballots cast into the ESNS DS 200 are scanned immediately and converted into a digital format of the paper ballot. Digitized images are easily manipulated compared to casting and counting of paper ballots. Number 12, only Dominion and ESNS vote machines are certified for use in Florida. In Palm Beach County, Runbeck's, Opex, Bluecrest, Clearbait Audit Systems, and Pitney Bowes manufacture voting equipment used to process our ballots. There's no discernible, no discernible difference in ballot process between machines certified for use and the array of machines exempt from a certification and requirement. Number 13, the ESNS vote machines used here are reported as corrupt in a Stacey Abrams report published by her group Fair Fight. The Abrams report is a 40-page compilation of AP information and articles of ESNS corruption from 20, 2002 to 2019. Notable excerpts are, number 14, ESNS machines run obsolete Windows technology. The service contract expired in January 14. It's an outmoded operating platform for elections. Number 15, in an email sent by the SOE on November 18, they admit that our ES and machine, ESNS machines do have modem components. Number 16, personal information of 1.8 million Chicago voters was breached into the cloud in 2017. This is alarming in today's culture of partisanship and tragic political persecution. Number 17, there are 495,211 disenstranced voters by ESNS machines across the US. We need to tally the 14 cases listed in the Abrams corruption report. Number 18, tall voters, over six feet tall, vote for the wrong candidates based on the screen angle. This bug was known by ESNS prior to the sale of its EVMs. Number 19, 22,619 machines were sold that flipped votes during the election after machines were calibrated pre-election. Number 20, headline in Wired on May 13, 2019.
I have to ask you to end your presentation.
Okay, I'm at number 20. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Following Peter J. Barber will be.
Thank you very much. My name is Peter Barber, and I'm from Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. And we understand that what your statement was about, about only controlling the purse strings, but we believe that these, these articles that we're reading, we think are, should be on record as important to the, to the public should know. And purse strings in this country are very, very important. So to downplay it, to say you only fund these people is really not, not a fair item either. We, purse strings are very, very important. With that, I'll continue to number 20 with your permission. Headline in Wired, May 13, 2019, "A Critical Firewall Vulnerability That Allowed Attackers to Fully Compromise Device Networks Was Found in the ESNS Voting Machines," which I referred to the last time I was here. That means we hackers can make arbitrary changes to a Cisco router, and the trust anchor will still report that the device is trustworthy. Number 21, ESNS barcode ballot producing machines are called a ruse. That makes a mockery of the notion that the ballot is voter verifiable. The machines produce a paper ballot for the voter to check, but the unreadable barcode below is actually tallied. Number 22, this SOE link gave Republicans a life of the ballot tour at the Riviera Beach facility in September 27, 2021. I, I was there. Not disclosed to Republicans, two new machines were coming to Palm Beach County, the Novus Runback duplicator and the Opex Model 72 ballot extraction desk, where actively only one month later, on October 27, October 21, the instruction manual was resting on top of one of them. Number 23, the Opex ballot extractor extracts up to 3,600 ballots per hour versus a manual extraction rate of 30 to 50 per hour. That was done with careful bipartisan oversight, speed prioritized over accuracy, and a bipartisan operation. Why? Number 24, the Opex extractor error codes error ballot challenge opportunities by its speed rate. SB 90 election law on page 40 of 48, lines 1,134 to 1,143. If any elector or candidate present believes that the vote by mail ballot is illegal due to the defect apparent to the voter certificate.
Okay, your, your time has expired.
I understand. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. I ended on the middle of number 24.
All right. I'm just going to make one more statement about this. The governor in April signed a bill that created a standalone election police department to handle what you're talking about. There is an appointment of Peter Attanaci, who is now the top election cop of the state. Please don't come back to the microphone. You're not going to have another opportunity to speak. If you have concerns about election integrity, and everybody up here wants an election that's transparent and that people can trust, if you have concerns, that is the place you should be taking your concerns. We can't help you. We will listen, we will understand what you're saying, but if you want to take it to someone who can do something, you need to take it to the state's election cop, and that's Peter Attanaci. Okay, next person, please.
Following Christine Hemphill, we'll have Drew Martin, Ken Yermez, and Jason Yermez.
You're recognized.
Thank you. Christine Hemphill.
Give your microphone a tug-down.
Christine Hemphill.
Christine Hemphill, North M Street, Lake Worth. I wanted to talk a little bit about housing and say that while everybody is worried about our affordable housing issue and housing everyone, we need to keep the focus directly on what it is that's the problem and try and solve it. And I think that when we look at Florida, the numbers I heard on the sunshine economy in the past years, 20-some percent of the buyers in Florida were cash buyers. In the last 12 months, they update every 12-month backs. The last time I heard them give the number, it was 53%. So 53% of the people are walking in there and paying cash, and that's for statewide the number, all over the facts. They say that we have, in Florida, 1.7 million owned homes that are unlived in, which is normal for Florida because of the people who aren't here. So we really don't have a crisis of homes not being available. We have 1.7 million empty houses. The problem that we have is homes for the people that they can afford. And so when you look at the swap or GL Homes development in the ag reserve or anything opening up the ag reserve that we're talking about, because that's not where affordable housing needs to go, then what you're looking at is doing a favor for some million-dollar houses to sit there that have nothing to do with the housing crisis. It has to do with letting a developer put houses to make some money. It's not a housing crisis issue. And I think that when we went back and heard all the meetings, the past mayor was read from the rules that developed the ag reserve and said, very detailed, "Nothing has changed in 20 years." And that is very true. The ag reserve is still a floodplain. It still has the special soil. It still has the goals of the future that doesn't freeze for the future of our agriculture, all of the reasons that we thought were important. You can't take and swap. There's no such thing. This land lives here, and that land lives there. So if the Indian development people have a problem with water, then you people should really concentrate on them and solve their problem there. And if ag reserve has issues, you should have a good reason. Like, for example, if we invented some green development, you shouldn't be allowing houses to come in with our future the way it is. People don't want fracking. Why would you allow gas lines in there? So we need nothing forward-thinking. The old plan still stands, and you should deny.
Thank you very much for your opinion.
So Drew Martin is next, and then we'll have Ken Yermez, and then we'll have Joan Yermez.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, Drew Martin. I'm here on behalf of the Locks Etiquette Group of the Sierra Club. I just want to start out by saying I hope, you know, that the people here, and they seem very polite on the elections, but I hope that they will be polite to our election workers. There's been a lot of problems with election workers leaving because they're being harassed. So I just, you know, I think we should treat them with respect, and I think that's important in all our dealings. And I appreciate that everyone here today has been very polite and respectful. I want to talk about a couple of things. First of all, the Sierra Club is very unhappy about the bear being killed, Palm Beach Gardens. One of the things concerns me is the sheriff's department really, and I guess the sheriffs may be a constitutional officer too, but, you know, we really don't have any recourse with these sort of actions. I mean, Fish and Wildlife was right there. They said the bear does not need to be killed. The bear is not a threat. They were very close to open space. They just want, and with all the drones and equipment the sheriff's office had, all they had to do was monitor the bear and make sure it went back. Everybody was locked in their homes. There weren't any kids out. Everybody knew the situation, and nobody was at risk. Nobody was in danger, and the bear was not threatening anybody. So we think that there was no reason to kill the bear, and Fish and Wildlife thinks there was no reason to kill the bear. So it'd be very nice if the sheriff's department would just be a little more transparent, because they may be a constitutional officer, but they still work for the public. And so the public, you know, is not, at least this public's not satisfied with how that was handled. I want to talk about the ag reserve. We do not think the swap is a good idea. First of all, it's apples and oranges. You're going to harm the people in the ag reserve. You're going to take away agriculture land. Potentially, it might benefit someone somewhere else. There isn't really a clear plan, but why would you hurt one set of citizens for another set of citizens? It doesn't make any sense. The two areas are not attached. If you take away, you know, a place to put floodwaters, and agriculture land can hold floodwaters. It depends on how the drainage operates, but if you have to choose between flooding homes and flooding a farm, I would suspect that the drainage people would flood a farm first. You can always, farmers have insurance, and they have crop insurance, and they can be reimbursed. It's a lot cheaper than trying to rebuild and repair homes. We are opposed to the swap. We don't think it's fair, and we don't think it makes sense from a scientific aspect. Last thing I want to say on the restaurant down here is still handing out Styrofoam in plastic bags. I really would like to see the county commission adopt a plan that reduces that. Canada just did it. Look to Canada. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Ken Yermez. I'm here for the Hyder West property. The county envisioned a united approach for future development and conservation. Intrical was the preservation of farmland, wetlands, open space, parks, recreation, residential, and commercial development. I believe development and preservation are not incompatible. I strongly agree that landowners be permitted to fully use their private property, fully use their property. However, they must adhere to government regulations, for example, the county zoning board rules and regulations, as long as those regulations promote the health, the safety, and the general welfare of the community. In the instant case of the Hyder West property, which is a property on 441, which is very close to two places that I lived, in the Oaks and in Tierra del Rey, which are located on 441, I see no unnecessary hardship to the landowner in denying them a land use exception, change, or variance. I do not believe the applicant has met their burden. Rather, to develop the property under current land use comportes with the plain language, the spirit, and the intent of Palm Beach County planning land use laws. The only hardship I see to the landowner would be his inability to maximize their investment opportunity and therefore maximize their profitability. This, to me, would not meet the test for unnecessary or undue hardship. Finally, I just want to say one other thing as regards to the housing. Mortgage interest rates are rising, resulting in a subsequent decrease in the demand for housing. Currently, homes in Palm Beach County are beginning to stay on the market longer than they did before. Prices are beginning to fall. Therefore, the urgency and need for new large-scale residential developments is ebbing downward. If we continue to build at a fever pace, we will outstrip our demand, and current homeowners of all your constituents will see their property values decrease with resulting decreases in the revenue for our county. With Zoom, internet, and Amazon, there's less need for commercial space, for office space, and shopping center space. I believe in orderly growth, preserving clean water, and providing affordable housing. It's very important. Conserving natural conditions. I ask the commission today to deny this application, and I thank each and every one of you, and I hope you enjoy your day.
And we thank you for your comments.
Hi, I would like to give you one of these, please.
Mr. Boularen, would you grab that, please?
Sorry about that.
And is it Jean or...
Yes, it is.
Sorry, I've got it wrong a couple times.
I'm sorry, I scribbled it. My fault.
We're sharing glasses here, I see.
Every time I do it like that, and the spelling is, you know, you can't read it. I apologize. I'll print it next time. Okay, Jean Yermez, and good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for your time. I've spoken at these meetings many times. I have highlighted the brilliant foresight of your predecessors. They had the permitting, putting to a vote the referendum relating to many acres of land in our community. This referendum was passed by the community and was intended to be a safeguard against undue development and destructive practices in the ag reserve. I've suggested putting in place a land bank. Land banks set aside certain parcels of land for neighborhood use and benefits. 25 states have functioning, successful land banks, which ensure the county is able to secure sizable reserves of land at low cost to the neighborhood. Such protections will help ensure that our neighbors' children and grandchildren are able to live in the same wonderful community we've all had the privilege of enjoying. I've provided you with a news article from 2008 written by The Post regarding the GL purchase of the Hyder West property. In it, it states that GL Homes promises to preserve 547 acres to meet requirements for another project that they were granted zoning changes for. This property is located on the west corner of Boynton Beach Boulevard and Lyons Road, which is now known as Valencia Reserve. Has this exchange taken place, or are these empty promises made by powerful developers? If we don't hold them accountable, who will? I beg you not to rezone this precious ag reserve land. I beg you to reconsider allowing another sparse piece of land to be destroyed for more homes. Please consider the entire community in your decision. Please think of the animals, wildlife, vegetation. Please think of future generations. We've already given so much. We can't afford to lose anymore. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there Shauna Romary? Did I get the name right?
Close enough. Shauna Romani.
And then we'll have Alexis Rossi and Stephen Isaacson.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Shauna Romani. I'm a Palm Beach County native and small business owner. My company is a riding academy that operates out of Sunshine Meadows Equestrian Village. We've been in business for over 10 years. Prior to founding my company in 2011, I apprenticed at Sunshine Meadows for an additional decade. This farm is where I've spent 20 years of my life. It's been a great privilege to welcome guests to this vast, open land. The vibe is positive, free, and healthy. First-time visitors are shocked and awed by the scope of the beauty, and we take great pride in this. To develop the Hyder West parcel would be to squeeze the life out of what makes this unique treasure special. Should this land swap take place, Sunshine Meadows will resemble more of a misplaced island surrounded by development than the rolling farm it once was. Where before we'd hear birds chirping and see open land, now we'll hear construction crashing, ripping, and destroying. Our view will change to concrete walls. Please consider that sometimes people need space from the hustle and the bustle. Unfortunately, Palm Beach County was home to the horrific incident at Marjory Stoneman Douglas in 2018. Our farm had the resources so desperately needed to offer therapy. We initiated a free-of-charge, open-door program to individuals who are suffering with trauma and grief. Students spent unscheduled quiet time in our environment. Some of these kids found it cathartic to nurture horses and ride, and others simply wanted to be left alone to walk the fields, absorb the solitude, and heal. I watched from a distance and felt humbled to be able to invite these people to a uniquely tranquil escape. I've witnessed firsthand how this place is medicine for the human soul, and we need to protect it. In addition, the surrounding wetlands provide a thriving habitat to countless animal species. I personally have seen rare birds by the flock, large wild cats, pigs, deer, alligators, and many other species. These animals call the Hyder West Preserve their home, and it's imperative to protect their delicate ecosystem. Wild animals live here because there's enough space to support their needs. Blocking off Hyder West from Sunshine Meadows will strangle and dim that opportunity. Developing homes here is not at all compatible with the current ecosystem. The cold, hard truth is that the space would be permanently devastated. It seems that consideration for this parcel is largely due to a convenient solution offered by a private company to solve the county's water problem. If the majority of commissioners choose to move forward and this development happens, what precedent are we moving forward with? Are preserves really preserved, or is their preservation contingent on the depth of the pocket by which they are pursued? Hyder West provides the buffer that we so desperately need to protect our quiet place for finding peace. As a native, I've witnessed decades of South Florida's development. Where we would once play in fields as children, now there's frustrating congestion and traffic lights that take rotations to pass through. Please, help us protect this land for our children, the horses, and the fragile wildlife. Growth is inevitable, but I'm here to ask that it be managed within the current boundaries. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Excellent timing.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Can I just...
Commissioner, you're recognized.
Can I just ask for the address of Sunshine Meadows that she was referring to?
I can tell you.
Well, I don't think she lives at Sunshine Meadows.
I understand she doesn't live there, but she was referring...
Is it 83 Meadows Drive?
No, the barn address is 16668 Winter Circle, Delray Beach, Florida, 33445.
On 441.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alexis Rossi, then Stephen Isaacson.
That's me. Oh, no, let me... All right. Good afternoon. My name is Alexis Rossi, and I am here to oppose GL's amendment for a land exchange from the Indian Trails Grove Rural Tier with the Hyder West Ag Reserve. I was hoping that I could specifically address Vice Mayor Weiss, as I am one of your constituents. I have lived in your district for many years, and I even voted for you in 2018. It's cool to see you up there. I loved specifically that you are passionate about the environment and seem motivated to protect it. It even says on your bio on the Palm Beach Government website that you have a special interest in protecting and conserving environmentally sensitive areas and ecosystems. But if that's true, why is it okay to destroy this ecosystem? Hyder West is home to tons of animals, and it is its own ecosystem. There's bobcats and coyotes that my horse wished didn't live there, and birds and alligators and all those other wonderful animals that represent natural Florida, not to mention the livestock. If you haven't been there, there's a massive herd of cows at the front. Don't drive through with your windows down. What is the point of designating space as a protected ag reserve if it can be swapped or bought out? Also, in your online bio, you say that you want to help with affordable and quality housing for all of our county residents. It's concerning that there is a possibility of violating those sorts of things, your special interests, maintaining the environment, while also catering to the super-deep pockets of GL Homes and the very small minority that can afford to live there. I understand to you that it's very important that our community fix the West Palm Beach water infrastructure system. I lived there. When we had boil water warnings every other day, when you turned on the water and, like, toxins kind of poured out. I personally understand what it's like not to have access to the running water, but there has to be a different way to solve that problem. From what I understand, there is a rather large budget that the county commissioners have access to, and I feel like some of that money might be better suited to fixing and creating appropriate and constant access for the people in West Palm Beach to have clean water. There's no way that I can conceive that the only solution for the people of West Palm is GL Homes' land swap deal. There's got to be something else. Please consider all of the options and helping your constituency before making this kind of permanent deal that will affect everyone from now until forever. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your remarks. And the vice mayor would like to respond.
I just want to let you know, thank you very much, but also that it's National Cow Day today.
I said "hey" to them when I drove by. As soon as they're getting...
Following Mr. Isaacson, we'll have Lorna Wallach and then Patricia Testa.
Mayor, if it's all right, I have a Palm Beach Post article I'd like to have the commissioners all have.
All right, give it to the clerk, and she'll take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll receive and file.
My name is Steve Isaacson, and I'm here today to oppose the GL amendment for land exchange from the Indian Trails Grove Rural Tier to the Hyder West AG Reserve Tier. Hopefully, you have reviewed the February 2 meeting video of the GL proposal and your illuminating discussion prior to your vote to initiate the GL amendment. GL's elaborate and professional presentation was designed to evoke your initiation vote on their land swap proposal. What developed, as Commissioner Sachs stated, was a focus on a water problem at Indian Trails Grove that potentially could affect water for the community. Commissioner Marino even suggested that GL, in addition to their deeding 1,600 acres within the Indian Trails Grove, should look to provide the necessary infrastructure to fix the potential water problems. Vice Mayor Weiss stated that, quote, "If..." Vice Mayor Weiss stated that, quote, "If the vote to support was held today, his vote would not, would be not to support." Clearly, Vice Mayor Weiss's vote to initiate was to discover how GL's proposal would address the water issue. However, nowhere in GL's proposal that was under review for initiation was there reference to providing a solution to the county's water issues. It appeared that Commissioner McKinley's catalyst for renewing the GL land exchange proposal was water issues. But commissioners, is the county, with an annual budget of $6 billion, not able to address a water problem without violating the intent of the $150 million bond your constituents voted for in the 1999 to conserve the ag reserve? Puzzling. If, in fact, the 1,600 acres is a critical piece of property for solving the water issue, then, as Commissioner Kerner stated, is there not eminent domain considerations for this property? Absent any water issue, does the GL Comprehensive Plan Amendment hold water? Well, the county planning commission doesn't think so. GL argues that one of the benefits of their proposal is that the county would acquire a critical piece of property, the 1,600 acres which GL is unable to build on that could be used for needed water storage projects. However, Barbara Roth, planning commissioner, states that there has been no evidence presented that a project would or could be built. Commissioner Kerner's analysis identified the real danger to the ag reserve by his, by this amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. Increased density, loss of preserved AG land, and open the door to requests from other developers to use any land in the county to offset ag reserve land as a result of this precedent created. Furthermore, the amendment would negate the restriction to build west of State Road 7 and open the door to future development. In closing, GL contracted for the Hyder West property in 2005 and closed on the property in 2008 from the Hyder family. At the time of contract, GL knew they could not build on this property.
I need to ask you to, and we know exactly what you're saying, and we thank you. And I, you gave a copy of the, the article. We have that up here now. Thank you.
Perfect. We appreciate your time.
Lorna Wallach, then Patricia Testa, and Sheila Calderon.
I have one request before I get started. I got a text from Dr. Sefrani, who's stuck on I-95 because of an accident there, who had something to present. He asked if I would be able to present for him. I'm asking permission.
You can only have three minutes, so do the best you can.
All right. Then I'll make sure that I send on to you his, his whole thing, okay? Okay, so, good afternoon. My name is Lorna Wallach. I live in the ag reserve, and I'm here again to oppose GL's land swap proposal. So, is GL's proposal about fixing water for Palm Beach County or simply a glorified land swap? Some of our commissioners want you to believe that GL, a land developer, is the county's savior for solving a water problem in the West Palm Beach area. I can only guess that some of the commissioners believe that Palm Beach County employees lack necessary skills to deal with the water issue on their own. Also, let's not forget that GL has tons of money to give away, as proven on the front page of the Palm Beach Post article dated June 11, 2022, titled "Project Needed Support, So Developer Offered $7 Million in Perks." We are speaking about Stonebridge Country Club. Vice President Mark Silverman of Stonebridge Property Association stated, "It's a business transaction." So what exactly did GL buy from Stonebridge? I can't seem to find that. Who else is GL offering money perks to besides Stonebridge? They can't be the only one. Hopefully, the commissioners would look into that as well. Maybe the county's $5.9 billion budget doesn't have an allocation to deal with water. Hmm, so no qualified Palm Beach County employees and no money. So let's give GL the keys to the kingdom. Let's give them the power to dictate county policies that will change the rules forever. In GL's proposal, they want the commissioners to remove the 1.51 future land use policy that was correctly put in place by the commissioners in 1999. The policy was put in place to not allow development west of State Road 7 to protect the ecosystem from greedy developers. As to the question of the water fix, nowhere in GL's proposal is there any language describing construction, manpower, or money to fix a water problem, only that the county will be deeded 1,600 acres in the Indian Trails Grove. In turn, GL gains onbridal power to develop in the ag reserve west of State Road 7. A new precedent will be put into motion that the commissioners will be unable to stop against future development. Also, there's no language in GL's proposal to the effect on Sunshine Meadows and still wrongly maintains their proposal is compatible to surrounding areas. They previously compared the project to Palm Meadows and Equus, which is nowhere near the Loxahatchee Wildlife Preserve's fragile ecosystem. Palm Beach County Future Land Element Number 15 states support and enhance agriculture and equestrian-based industries. GL's proposal will devastate Sunshine Meadows. Lastly, the petition to protect Sunshine Meadows at the ag reserve has 2,676 signatures as of this morning. That is 2,676 people in this room that has to be counted against GL's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments.
Patricia Testa. Following Patricia Testa, we'll have Sheila Calderon and Colleen Murgazi.
Hi, my name is Patricia Testa. I'm from Jupiter. I thank God I'm alive today, and I pray that I serve Him well. I come to report on an election integrity project for vote-by-mail signature inspection. On June 21st, the local sheriff's substation, fire station, and supervisor of election team were informed that on July 28th at 1:00 p.m., a large crowd may arrive at the SOE Riviera site for a joyful patriotic celebration. Any insinuation that we are creating a problem that doesn't exist or stirring up problem, trouble is simply untrue. Quote, "A candidate, a political party official, or a political committee official or an authorized designated thereof shall be granted reasonable access upon request to review or inspect ballot materials." SOE is changing SB 101.572, paragraph 2, from a candidate to a group of candidates. This room is full of political rivals, parties, PAC supporters, each better than the other. If qualified, you can inspect ballots. There's two plans. The first one, by our election integrity project, is that each of the inspectors that are in the room, so if there's 50 of you, get to review ballots, one to two ballots a minute for 30 minutes. You can inspect 1,500 to 3,000 ballots in one 30-minute section, period. This puts crooks on notice. The SOE plan is to take the entire room, split it in half, put two large monitors up, side by side, with the groups yelling out accept or reject. One to two ballots in 30 minutes with two teams gives you 60 to 120 ballots inspected, reassures crooks no one is watching, no one is inspecting. SOE is full, is a full election mode and will not meet again. Allison Navoa sent two separate emails repeating, quote, "While we appreciate you notifying us of election integrity project, we would like to be clear that the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections is in no way responsible for, or associated with, or affiliated with this project." She goes on to say, quote, "That means that we recognize that you have instigated an election integrity project. Your project is not our project. Reasonable access is being debated and defined at the highest level of government. The SOE office, per Allison Navoa, defines reasonable access as an adjective that was added because the supervisors of elections were charged with creating procedures that would not unduly hinder the administration of a successful election or timely reporting of results." Silly me. It has nothing to do with the voters and nothing to do with election integrity. Tick tock, tick tock. I'm not an attorney, but I think that denying access that is reasonable breaks the law. Hundreds of temporary staff qualified to handle ballots literally sit and wait during the public inspection. Other resources, monitors, computers, desks, cages rearranged, could have happened since the June meeting and better yet since 101.572 was signed. But instead, the clock keeps running out, and statewide, the SOE are shutting it down. Not that, not until every obstacle is removed and there is still no path forward will I accept that access. It's unreasonable. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comments.
And thank you for responding to my email, Mr. McKinley. Thank you.
Ms. Calderon, then we'll have Colleen Murgazi.
Good afternoon, Mayor Weiss, Vice Mayor and County Commissioners. I'm here once again to speak about my concerns, as a number of other people have already today, of developing the ag reserve. I'll try to be brief and give you the list of reasons for denying the proposal by GL Homes of a development swap. The citizens voted to pass a bond proposal taxing themselves in 1999 to ensure the ag reserve would remain as such for agricultural or preservation of land. Proposed development on the ag reserve is supposed to allow only 40% for development. This proposal is intended to build homes on the whole, is intending, the proposal of GL Homes is intending to build homes on the whole property. The continued development will further destroy the agricultural reserve as it is not compatible to have development as proposed next to an agricultural area, or as it would, in this case, be adjacent to Sunshine Meadows Horse Farm that is of great service to the community. Sure, there'll be an increase in tax revenue. However, that increase will go to develop and maintain services such as fire, police, and schools, et cetera, services required to accommodate the new residents. This development would set precedent to continue development and be at the expense of good public policy, revoking the promise by commissioners made to the public to protect and preserve the land in the ag reserve. It wouldn't take but a few years to have the ag reserve paved over. This is the least thing that we need. Presently saving the ag reserve is not only to the benefit of the consumers here, the consumers here in Florida, but services the northeast in the winter months when an abundance of produce that lead to the necessity of purchasing more imported produce, produce locally as well. This would be a breach of public trust, certainly not looked favorably on the commissioners that might choose to move this project forward. Please consider your vote on this proposal with great care and concern, and thank you as always for your attention.
And thank you very much for your comments.
Following Colleen, how do you pronounce your last name? I apologize.
Menegazi.
Menegazi. Following Ms. Menegazi, we'll have Lynn Redmond, and then Jonathan, can't read the last name, but from Wellington.
Hello, my name is Colleen Menegazi. As you can see, I have nothing here written down. I'm just here to speak on behalf of Sunshine Meadows Equestrian and Aberdeen Riding Academy. My daughter, who's nine, has been riding there for a little over a year, and I cannot even begin to express to you how beautiful the land is and how soothing and restorative it is for me to take her. While she rides, I walk the perimeters of the property to try to get some much-needed exercise, and the thought of disrupting the land around Sunshine Meadows Equestrian is very upsetting to me. I have lived in a house before where they were doing a lot of construction and a lot of land development, and it created allergies for people that I knew, as well as for our daughter when she was a baby. All I can imagine is if there was a lot of construction going on, the horses would be very uneasy. It would make it much more difficult for people to learn to ride, and as you know, there's a lot of children riding there, children with special needs, children that just love to ride, adults that love to ride. I just can't even imagine how it would disrupt the whole horse psyche. Animals are very important to me. I also can't imagine filling all of that land that I see with the water around Sunshine Meadows Equestrian, just coming in with bulldozers and just randomly filling it with dirt. That's what I picture. I picture turtles suffocating, alligators dying, which I'm not really a fan, but still. The birds, the wild habitat there is incredible. I would actually invite anybody, even though I don't, I only go to the property two days a week, for two hours a week. So I'm not an expert in any way, but I will tell you, I drive 40 minutes to get there each way. I don't care. It's just that important to me to have some sort of natural Florida wildlife, as well as very, very well-maintained horses, very maintained stables. It's also, and I'm, I'll finish here, from what I understand, if there's ever a hurricane coming, it's a facility that is able to take on the horses that need to be boarded in case of a hurricane. Now, that right there is very important to me. All I can imagine, if there was a hurricane, is more house roofs flying off closer to the animals, so please say no to building GL Homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Following Lynn Redmond, we'll have, sorry, Lynn Redmond, we'll have Jonathan from Wellington, and then Arlene Berry.
Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm going to continue with number 24 on the voter integrity. If any elector or candidate presents, present believes that a vote-by-mail ballot is illegal due to defect apparent on the voter's certificate or the cure affidavit, he or she may, at any time before the ballot is removed from the envelope, file with the canvassing board to protect against the canvas of that ballot specifying the precinct, the voter's certificate, or the cure affidavit. And the reason he or she believes the ballot to be illegal, a challenge based upon a deficit in the voter's certification or cure affidavit may not be accepted after the ballot has been removed from the mailing envelope. Number 25, the OpEx ballot extractor tore all 50 sample ballots at logic and accuracy tour on February 17, 2022. Number 26, ballots damaged by the OpEx require duplication. It means countless otherwise fit ballots, ballots must go to the Runbeck duplication station where humans make the final decision on ballots. 27, it is difficult to trust the Runbeck duplicator after looking into the Runbeck family involvement in the 2020 election. Background, Runbeck founded a printing company in '72. They later patented their voting machine suites. And number 28, Runbeck Election Services is the return address label for fake ballots found in Fulton County, Georgia, in the November 2020 presidential election. They were determined to be phony professionally printed ballots. The Runbeck ballots had, had no full decreases as with legitimate mailed ballots. The print, the printing was identical on all ballots. The target ovals had a unique white crescent shape in the center, and it was identical on all printed ballots, ballots sent by the Runbeck Services. 29, the same Runbeck Election Services label is addressed to Dwight Brower, the name of the person who called in the fake water main break to stop counting ballots in the Fulton County elections in 2020. Number 30, Brian Runbeck donated, donated to Biden campaign 50-plus times in 2020. The Runbeck family is partisan. Would Democrats approve of using, for example, Trump family equipment? I don't think so. Number 31, duplication applies to vote-by-mail ballots under voter ballots. Over voter ballots, damaged ballots, personal provisional ballots, ballots, and new ballots ripped by the OpEx extractor.
I need to have you conclude.
Okay. I thank you very much for letting us speak today. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time to come up to see us.
Is it Jonathan Schiffer?
It is. It is from Wellington. Thank you for figuring out the last name. I'm going to continue this, but I'm going to stop, hopefully, with a minute left and ask one question, one or two questions. Number 32, the SOE has a virtual elections experience tour on YouTube with nine different learning stations listed and explained. The Novus Runbeck duplicator station is not listed, even though it applies to the majority of ballots. All stations except duplicating are listed at the time code of 22 seconds. Why are mid-stations so important that Florida law requires canvassing board supervision? Number 33, Republicans are relieved of poll worker jobs by the SOE for the upcoming 2022 elections. A notable example among many is Ms. Linda Gore. She served in the same precinct, quote, Admiral's Cove, close quote, for 20 years, but the SOE said they don't need her anymore. Number 34, while the SOE dismisses registered Republicans, SOE emails were recruited for 4,000 new poll workers in May 2022 and 5,000 poll workers in June 2022. Number 35, the sunshine law is challenged by SOE. Number 35, the Sunshine Law is challenged by SOE, Ms. Link, for implementing a 15-minute time limit per person to observe signatures and, number 36, a 15-minute time limit per person to observe the canvassing board, and, number 37, a 15-minute limit per person to observe the duplication station. Number 38, no more videos are permitted. Number 39, no more photos are permitted. Number 40, observers are put outside in a tent where they cannot make challenges. I'm going to stop there because I have a question that I need some clarification on. It's normal to have a system of checks and balances. Our whole system works with a system of checks and balances. Other than elections, during the course of this person's SOE's tenure, what are the checks and balances on her when she acts in ways which are controversial, shall we say? You have the power of the purse. You have a budget. What is your procedure for determining how much money goes to her and how much money doesn't go to her? Do you actually look at any of these things that are being raised before you today, or do you just mechanically process the amount of money in the budget and send it her way, regardless of controversies that have been raised before you? That's the first part of the question. The second part of the question is what's the relationship between you and the cop or the policeman that you said Governor DeSantis has created, and what's the relationship between that cop and this person, SOE Link? There are three people there. Again, we have a system of checks and balances. It cannot be that the only check and balance is an election once every two, four, six years. Our government doesn't work that way. There are checks and balances every day with everybody else. What's going on here? Thank you very much.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comments.
Yes, thank you very much.
Arlene Berry, and then we'll have George Sorik.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak. I wanted to speak on the importance of the Ag Reserve. This was a bond issue that came before the people in 1999, and it was voted on unanimously by the people. We dedicated $150 million to the proposal, and it had merit. It has a lot of value. It has a lot of worth. The Ag Reserve is a treasure to our county, and that's why it was approved. We don't have that much agriculture left. Reuters has a report now about we're going to be suffering food shortages. The president has discussed it. It's been discussed all over the world. Chancellor of Germany has discussed it. So this is something that is in our backyard that we could use. Palm Beach County has been the winter capital growing of the country. We grow salads, cucumbers, tomatoes, among other things, fruits. And the referendum, if you read, I'm sure you must have read it, page 31 to 48, I read it, it's very readable, all the programs they have, the cooperative extension, the suggestions and the help they were giving to the farmers and the minorities to grow ethnic vegetables, different things that we don't normally see on our menu, but if you go to ethnic stores, you do see them, the cassavas, for example. So these are all programs like the land bank that we could reinstitute or pay some attention to. It seems like it's being ignored, and later on, we will regret it, I believe, coming a few years. I mean, sprawl is everywhere. We know that, everybody is familiar with suburban sprawl. It's the division between the urban and the rural that's very valuable and precious to people, the greenery. The Hyde Park West parcel is abuts the Loxahatchee Wildlife Refuge. It's a beautiful spot, and that is a transition area for the animals, for the wading birds, for the bobcats, for what we have left of our animals. So to have the natural next to the agricultural, next to the growers, that's something that we have to remember is an important resource of Palm Beach County and was in fact an economic driver. So I just want to say that the most beautiful cities in the world are the ones that have the rural next to the urban, if you think about it. If you think about Paris, if you think about Venice, if you think about Florence, you can't take it out of the surrounding countryside.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Following George Sorik, we'll have Amanda O'Boyle and Robert Guzardi.
Hi, name is Soria, George Soria.
Apologies.
No, it's okay. All right. Yeah, I run the South Florida Permaculture Resource Center, and obviously, permaculture is a way of, a solution to farming and where we can save and create food, not for me today, but forever. All right, it's taking the natural essence of what nature and our ecosystem can do for us and work with that. The reason here, and Arlene mentioned, was the fact that back in 1999, myself and all of us here, taxpayers, we allocated $150 million for the preservation and conservation of land, all right? And that has been why we spent it and why we accepted it. Now we're in a situation that, okay, it's again, a challenge because that land through the county, and again, not you guys as commissioners, because obviously, your elected officials that haven't been here since that long, but I think it's important to realize this, all right? The solution that's being offered by GL Homes, okay, in swapping land during this transaction, all right, if you go back into the chronology and history of the land ag and go back to 1980 and beyond, all right, this is nothing new. It's been produced to us as if the, they're coming with a solution of something new. This was done and negotiated back in 2005 where there was a swap and a trade-off, and now we're doing the same exact thing again, all right? And each time, we're giving up more and more land reserves for development, and that's wrong. This is not an incident. This is planned. In the next 15 years, when you guys, unfortunately not here, there'll be another commissioners, and I might not be here, but again, the same problem will come again, because it's almost like putting land aside for future use, using the land agriculture as the future plans for development. And we already had a shortage. We're already losing, 50% of our wildlife is gone, all right? Our tree lines, which protects us from hurricanes, are gone. Trees are being destroyed, even, they're being destroyed before even is approved, and they've been destroyed in preparation for clearing the land for development. These are things that are wrong. We are, back then, it was, we didn't know. We weren't aware of the fact. But today, we know about climate change. Today, we know what's happening to the animals. We know what's happening to ourselves, all right, from a health perspective, and we are not doing anything but the same thing we're doing before. And that needs to change. We cannot continue a process that is planned by developers just for the purpose of making money. I think this world is more valuable than that, because we depend on our ecosystem to survive. So the other issue is the Clean Water Act. If you are going to do anything, the EPA has passed a law, and it's essence of the Clean Water Act. The biggest pollution of water is runoff, and you can research it and find it, and if we keep developing, we have runoff, and concrete is poisonous to the land. So whatever development you choose to make in an ag will be running into the water system, which in fact will damage the agricultural land, and you need federal permission for that.
We appreciate them and your passion.
Thank you.
Following Amanda O'Boyle, we'll have Robert Guzardi, and then Bill O'Reilly.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Amanda O'Boyle, and I am also a Palm Beach native, and I'm here to speak on the Hyder West Development with GL Homes, and part of the work I do is also residential and commercial real estate, and I may not be as eloquent as everyone else was that spoke today on this matter. I will do my best to convey my feelings towards the development. So be human. Hold yourself with integrity and moral standards and codes of ethical conduct that the world may not even see or ever notice or take account for, but you will at the end of the day, when you rest your head on your pillow to sleep at night, you will know you have lived rightly. You will know that you have listened to the voice of your conscience. While it doesn't talk loudly or boast, it is available to all human beings if you are willing to silence the noise from the outside world and release the hidden agendas that grab at us to be fulfilled. This is a matter of integrity. We can shuffle this around all day, but what it boils down to with each and every one of us in this room is integrity, moral and ethical integrity. You can't buy that, you can't sell that, and you can't own it because it's a quality of a human being, human nature, and that lives inside of us or it doesn't. And you today get to decide and make the choice because the plethora of animals that are on that land and then call that land home need you, and the earth there that has not yet densified needs you. And the horses need you, and Sunshine Meadows needs you, and we need you, and I need you. May the choices we make today be the oath of our future. And I wanted to share a quote, "For most of history, man has had to fight nature to survive. In this century, he is beginning to realize that in order to survive, he must protect it." Thank you.
Thank you very much for your remarks.
Robert Guzardi, I live in West Palm Beach. Thank you for allowing us to put these matters on the record, even though we are aware that your input is limited. It is very important that these are on the record. Number 41, the SOE locks its doors during posted public observation hours. Example, October 27, 2021, December 22, 2021. Other states put cardboard over the windows, PBC locks the door. Number 42, on January 7, 2022, Wendy Satori-Link instructed the canvassing board it was acceptable to approve vote-by-mail envelopes that contained no signature in the certification or oath in direct violation of the Florida Statute 101.68, subparagraph 2, C1. Paraphrasing, a vote-by-mail ballot may only be counted if their signature on the voter's certification matches the signature on the voter registration. The certificate, that is the red box, cannot therefore be blank. SOE Link has advised the canvassing board that they have the authority to look outside the box because the law doesn't require the signature to be in the box. That is incorrect. There has not been a single prosecution of the violation of any vote-by-mail vote in the state of Florida in the last four years, as far as I know. It is impossible to believe, this is very clear, this is a clear violation of the law. Number 43, candidate Bill Whelan is running for State Senate, District 26. His legal name is William, but he is known as Bill. He submitted an affidavit to be listed as William Bill Whelan on the ballot. On July 5, 2021, at ballot review, Bill was not on the ballot, the "Bill" in quotes, was not on the ballot. He objected, and SOE Link placed a call to DOA Ms. Brown. They noted Bill's candidate oath was signed as William. The separate name change affidavit submitted to include Bill was ultimately ignored by the SOE due to William candidate oath signature. It could have been easy to correct the ballot, simply add Bill. I noticed that the law is followed to the T in some cases and not in others. Number 44, SOE did not permit Bill Whelan to take a photo of the ballot to which he objected. This is unprecedented. Number 45, SOE did not permit candidates to be accompanied by a campaign manager or any other person to inspect the ballot. This is unprecedented, and there doesn't seem to be any reason for that. Number 46, the SOE took a position that it was impractical to allow candidates to be accompanied for ballot inspection for space limits in the SOE facility. This is unprecedented. Number 47, the SOE waited until there was no time to make corrections on the ballot when inviting the candidates to review the ballot. Candidates review the ballots could have occurred weeks in advance before it was too late to make changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next we'll have Bill O'Reilly and Thomas Dodson. And then our final speaker will be Alan Weisberg.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thanks for having us, and Madam Administrator, I think she departed, but thanks for hearing us out on this election integrity stuff. We know that you're concerned with it as well as we are. I mean, it's a big deal, and we appreciate letting us go on record with our items and our grievances, and furthermore, we had Wendy Link here on June 21 to speak, so it's important to you, and that's why she was here. We look forward to working with Mr. Antoni, she's going forward after this. Maybe we can leave alone for a while, once we get things moving there, but if I may, continue on with a few items for the record that we started with. I'd like to start number 57. ERIC is a software tool utilized in Palm Beach County to locate voters. This tool needs to be investigated. The errors in the Palm Beach County voter rolls are disproportionately wrong compared to a Florida county tax assessors record. They get, and, they get, they get an alley for the property tax rolls, they don't compare up to the error. The supervisor of elections is its own entity, but Commissioner McKinley corrected, replied that she, the SOE, independently elected, like property appraiser or tax collector or the sheriff. The DOE says the same thing, phrase, but a little bit differently. There's an accountability lapse for concerned Palm Beach County voters. This is unacceptable election because his inaccuracies were proved by extensive Defend Florida canvassing when they, when they did their canvassing results. Now, back on September 21, 2021, Defend Florida canvas results, 9,008 samples in Florida that had a 50% error rate. On January 28, 2022 of this year, our county, Palm Beach County, ranked worst in Defend Florida statewide canvas over 21,000 ballot Florida homes, with 59% of those homes canvassed. 59% had affidavits filed. That's 502 canvas homes, and Palm Beach County resulted in 295 affidavits of voter error, role error. Number 62, to address the election integrity concerns, live streaming for superior election transparency was proposed. It was rejected by the SOE Wendy Satori-Link for many reasons. Number 63, SOE Link stated that it was not possible to manually count paper ballots. Canada doesn't. Other states do it on precinct-by-precinct basis. So can we. 64 says, and June 8, 2022, SOE wrote, paraphrased, "It cannot adopt live streaming for legal reasons, but might consider it in the future at the new facility."
I have to cut you off there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Well, just for record keeping, are you Bill O'Reilly or Thomas Dodson?
I'm sorry, Bill O'Reilly, poker tongue. Forgive me. Thank you.
And are you Thomas Dodson?
Yes, I am.
All right, and then Alan Weisberg will be our last speaker.
Tom Dodson from Delray Beach, carrying on with the presentation related to the voter, the election integrity issues and concerns, and also following up with the live streaming discussion that was had at the last meeting, and some things that we have wanted to offer here. Number 64, on June 8, 22, email, SOE wrote, paraphrased, "It cannot adopt live streaming for legal reasons, but it might consider it in the future at the new SOE facility." It's kicking back what was said before. Number 65, the SOE assertion of live stream unlawfulness contradicts the use of it in Broward, Miami Dade, and Duval counties. Number 66, the SOE assertion of live stream unlawfulness also contradicts Janara Peck, who is Governor DeSantis' campaign manager. She wrote, "Supervisors of elections are free to provide additional transparency measures to allow observation of the ballot tabulation process as you suggest, such as live streaming." Number 67, SOE Link asserted there was no funding to livestream to locations that already require human oversight of the SOE. Ironically, the SOE funded an expensive but temporary observation tent outside the election facility for, quote, "transparency." Link said people could make challenges from the tent in the parking lot. How? It's not transparent to put observers outside the election facility in a tent. Number 68, SOE Link claimed livestreaming was unaffordable. Was a funding request officially made to the BCC by Wendy Satori-Link? If so, please consider this a formal request for a copy of the minutes of that meeting. Number 69, Wendy Satori-Link accepted the highest dollar amount of Zuckerberg third-party funding among all counties in the state of Florida. Number 70, SOE Link was required to sign a contract to receive Zuckerberg funding. Then the Novus Runbeck duplicator and the OpEx ballot extractor appeared in Palm Beach County. SOE Link ordered six of each. SOE Link ordered six of each. Did the Zuckerberg contract require use of those machines? Does the Zuckerberg contract abide Florida law? Can you find out? We could not get an answer from our SOE for something as benign as a ballot initiative deadline. Number 71, we heard that the BCC offered funding to SOE Link for livestreaming, and she declined it. If so, she accepted funding from Zuckerberg under publicly unknown conditions and refused money from the BCC for the livestream election transparency offered in nearby counties. Thank you very much. My time has run.
Thank you very much.
And then Mr. Weisberg.
Good afternoon. I'm Alan Weisberg. I live in Valencia Reserve, Boynton Beach. I'm here to oppose the GL High to West deal, and I agree with everything that everybody that has spoken before me has said about the negative aspect of this, but here's a little bit different take. I take you back to 2010, when I was trying to decide where I might like to retire. My parents had lived in Hollywood in a high-rise, and always was telling me I should come to Florida. And I looked at that, and I said, "If I have to live in another cement city, it's too bad for me." And I used to go up on 441 in Hollywood, and there's nothing there but solid cement from one end to the other, with hundreds of traffic lights. It's a disaster. Someone introduced me to Valencia Reserve, and we went to visit, and the sales lady told me how wonderful life is going to be in Boynton Beach. It's just not going to be like Broward County. You're going to have lots of open spaces. The ag reserve was put in place shortly before then, and that I could be assured that this land would be kept agricultural so that we could retire to a place totally different from where we came. And it was a big, big impact to us. And lastly, I happen to be a horse rider as well. I had no clue when I looked at Valencia Reserve as to what to do with the horse I had in New Jersey. I've been riding for many years. I ride as a volunteer with the sheriff in New Jersey. I currently do the same down here. They were the ones who introduced me to Sunshine Meadows and said, "This is the perfect place if you ride a horse. It's close by, there's lots of wonderful areas to ride on the Everglades," and sort of convinced me that that was the final nail in the coffin. That was perfect. A little more rural space, a place for my horse, and a good retirement. And I'm sure that that's what a lot of people that live in all the Valencias would tell you if we lined them up. And because of that, for all the other reasons as well, I hope you do not approve that deal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we thank all of our residents who took the time to speak to us today. And again, we, again, we've heard you with respect to the election integrity. I've made my remarks with respect to who you need to bring your comments to, and I'm sure that you'll have a receptive ear. That being said, we are going to take a 10-minute break. We are going to come back at 3:25 and resume our regular agendas. Thank you. 10-minute break. 10.
So we're in recess.
3:20? All right. We'll resume at 3:30.
We are back and we are ready to move on. And I believe we have exhausted our conversation on parking. So, we're going to move on to Government Center, which is Item 6B5, which you will find on page 44 because we pulled it off of consent. I think we did 6B2, let me double check. Yeah, 6O. I got it. Oh, Issa Me, you didn't have to run back.
Yes, I did. Just let me know.
Let me say a word before we take this up. I had asked to have this pulled off of consent because frankly, I think that we need to have a consensus as to what we want to do as far as this building we're sitting in. If it is the will of this body that we just fix it up and, you know, for the next 20, 30 years, or if we want to explore the potential of A, moving next door, building another building, C, moving out to the Vista Center and perhaps building a government center out there. All of this may not be anything you're interested in, but I thought before we commit ourselves to a consultant to conduct a condition assessment, we at least have a conversation about what our view is. And frankly, none of us will be here when any of this happens. So, well, we may be here physically, but not sitting here. So, and of course Commissioner McKinley will have been forgotten about this place by then.
I so feel the love, Mayor.
All right, so let's allow Issa Me to get beaten up again. And we can talk about, let's talk about free parking.
Understood. So, good afternoon again. Issa Me Adella, Director of Facilities Development and Operations. And with me is Chief Assistant County Attorney Howard Falcon. The item, excuse me, in front of you recommends approval of a contract with NIDA Architects LLC in the amount of $91,055 to provide professional AE services, design programming, permitting, and construction administration for Phase 1 of the Governmental Center Renewal and Replacement Project. That project includes upgrading and replacing basically all key building systems within the Governmental Center facility. We have stated that the project is to be implemented in phases. The first phase is just the assessment. It's the phase that will allow us to answer the question you just opened the conversation with about what it will take to renovate this building, if it is feasible to renovate it, or if new construction should be pursued. So, we are recommending approval. This is a project that is funded under the IST Infrastructure Sale Tax. We have about $69 million assigned towards this project. Let me highlight, if I may, that as part of the approval of the IST project plan back in 2017, condition assessments were performed across the board for all those projects that were included in the plan. So, this first phase now, under this contract, if so the board approves, will allow us to go into deeper, more in-depth into the condition of this building. This is just the first very initial component. We foresee that once the design team is on the field and starts looking at the building, I may need to come back with additional authorizations to perform destructive testing just to make sure what we have on the structural components, the electrical components, to be able to provide this board a full view of the condition of this building. We staff do not see and are not recommending proceed with the full design right now. What we are trying to do is position ourselves so that we can come back with our recommendation as to the potential renovation of this building or construction of a new one. And I will leave it there. I have more information, but I will stop.
Can you give me a timeline? When are we talking about this happening? Is this 10 years out? When do you think that?
Now, this project is currently funded. So, if we're authorized, if we're authorized to move forward with the assessment, I will ambition assessment and design, assuming we can do renovation, right? Assuming that the assessment shows, yes, you can renovate that building. I expect that first phase of design permitting to take about 18 months, okay? And once we have permits in place, then we will need to do the renovation phases. This building needs to continue to operate, as we know. Construction is disruptive by nature, by definition, right? So, what we have initially discussed as a team, as staff, is to have several floors done at the time so that we move those offices to an off-site location, work on those floors, and then occupy them and move to the next set of floors. So, that's kind of the conceptual approach we have in mind. But part of this programmatic assessment is precisely putting a game plan together, as I'm going to call it.
So, we have a 40-year-old building here. And presumably, by the time we let the contracts and do the work, it's probably at least five years out. So, it'll be a 45-year-old building. Are we doing any type of feasibility study as far as alternatives to just fixing this place up? Are we looking at what would be the county's needs over the next 25 to 40 years? And seeing, is this building capable of doing what our residents demand of the county government?
That's Phase 1. That's the programmatic assessment. That's taking the time to meet with all our users, whom, by the way, we have already notified that this effort is forthcoming. So, they're basically waiting for us to meet with us and help us define their projections into the future. And then have the architect firm be able to use that information and say, "Okay, you can renovate. You can gain space here within your footprint or not. This building will not be able to carry you into the..."
All right. Well, anybody else have any comments or any thoughts? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to pass 3H2. I got a motion by Commissioner Kernar. I got a second by the Vice Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sacks. You're so quiet over there.
You're lucky today. Thank you so much, Mayor. I just want to, on the feasibility study, there have been some discussions about possibly knocking the building down. And then the commissioners, and there's the three of us here, our offices being located within our districts, separate offices. And is that a conversation, is that going to be included in your feasibility studies?
That conversation is actually already initiated to an extent because we included that scope as part of South County Admin as well. We can include it under this one, so it shouldn't be a problem. Let me take the opportunity as well to share, if I may, that we also have a Vista expansion project ongoing to expand the facility for the building division down at Vista. So, I thought I will share that in, as it relates to your initial comment about other locations.
Thank you, Issa Me. Commissioner McKinley?
Issa Me considering, or taking into consideration that we leave the main hub of county operations here in downtown West Palm Beach in light of the fact that we gave most of our backup plan away to, or about to, to the University of Florida. What is left in terms of land holdings in downtown?
Commissioner, you may recall when we, excuse me, brought forward the item for you we basically highlighted that we had left in downtown two main areas, what we called the 45th Street vacant land, okay? And that one has been assigned to Community Services, a portion thereof. We have additional acreage. We just received the proposals for the design process related to that construction this past week. And those were the two real estate assets that we had downtown of significant acreage to accommodate construction. We also have some vacant land at Airport Center that we have highlighted before. That property has entitlements for the future construction of a general government facility of about 160,000 square feet. That's basically what we have right now of considerable acreage, not small parcels.
And so is it of your opinion that the bones of this building are good? We just need to gut the inside?
That is what the assessment in 2017 provided. That's what we believe to be the case today. And that's what we hope this programmatic assessment and condition assessment will confirm.
Thank you.
All right, call the vote. All in favor, all opposed? I see it as a six to zero. All right, let's move on. We're now on Item 6D1. Staff is recommending a resolution to Board of County Commissioners to approve an issuance of one or more series Revenue Bonds of Life Space Communities, Inc. by the Palm Beach County Health Facilities Authority in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $313.5 million. Neither the taxing power nor faith and credit of the county nor the county funds shall be pledged to pay the principal premium, if any, or interest on the bonds. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. We need to go back to Item 5C, sorry, 6D2 on page 89. We had not yet approved that one.
62?
6C.
6C2.
All right, wait a minute. Page 1?
89. I'll save you some time. It's a pretty wonderful opportunity. I think staff's been creative, so I'll go ahead and move approval of Item 6C2.
All right. All in favor, all opposed? Six to zero.
Mayor, who was the secondor? Mayor, who was the secondor?
The Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 6D1 and states that neither the taxing power nor the faith and credit of the county nor any county funds shall be pledged to pay the principal premium, if any, or interest on the bonds.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Kernar. All in favor, all opposed? It's approved, six to zero. It's not like we haven't moved around in this agenda at all today, huh? All right. Commissioner McKinley, your light's still on. You done over there?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay.
For now.
For now. All right, I think we are on 6D2. Okay, we're still here. All right, SHIP. Do we need a presentation? Not seeing anybody.
I know, I have one question though. Is this the, looking at all, everything's moving around. Is this the one where we're going to prioritize those individuals that are at high risk of contracting COVID? Or is that a different item?
No. This is a one-year action plan for our funds to receive for next fiscal year from HUD. And we had a workshop and we presented the proposal. We have not had any changes except that the allocation, there were some adjustments, so we have the actual numbers here. And we reallocated the funding proportionate to the changes in the funding level.
Okay. I know that there was an item in here somewhere in the agenda, may have been on consent, where some of those funds were going to be prioritized for that population. And I just, since we're talking housing, real quick, in light of the article that was in the Palm Beach Post on Thursday, June 30th regarding the homeless count, that our numbers went down, but the number of older individuals rose by 14%. That when we're allocating those dollars, we give consideration to our senior citizens.
All right, just going to make a note that the Emergency Solutions Grant is going to require a local match of $577,734 will be provided by the four ESG-funded agencies, Department of Community Services, DHED. The home requires a local match of $574,593 will be provided from the State Housing Incentives Program, SHIP. CBD, CBG, it's easy for me to say. CDBG funds require no local match.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Item 6D2.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor, all opposed? Show that as approved, six to zero. We're moving on quickly. I'm on 6D3. Anybody have any remarks? Do we need to have a presentation? Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Vice Mayor Weiss. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. This is for 6D3A and B. Calling a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Show that as approved, six to zero. All right, just put it on the mic.
Just for the record, on this item, no county funds for implementation are required.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, we have dropped 6D4. That's been removed from the agenda. We're moving on now to 6D5.
I will happily make the motion to approve Item 6D5A, B, and C. And really thank staff for working with us to get this project funded. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner McKinley has made the motion. Commissioner Bernard has seconded. Do I have any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, all opposed? Six to zero.
And Mayor, if I may, just to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to point out that this is from the ARPA funds that was allocated to housing, so we're already utilizing it.
Very good. All right, so budget transfer of 2.5 million in ARPA response project funds to provide funding of 2.5 million to the SP Field LLC for Calusa Point 2.
It's 154 units in Belgrade.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Items 6D, A, B, and C.
I'm very happy to accept that motion. Do I have a second? I have a second by the Vice Mayor. I don't see any lights. I don't see any... Oh, let me see what we're doing with cards here. You do have one for 6DC, 6D6. That's why I'm the man.
All righty, Jamie Lee Bradshaw.
There you go. We weren't going to forget you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Jamie Lee Bradshaw, Chief Strategy Officer for Community Partners of South Florida, recognizing our peers. The Village is a key housing response to individuals facing major challenges in their life. We fear that if this property is sold to cash investors, we lose affordable housing as well as complementary services. So, we thank you for your support on this measure.
And we thank you for coming and waiting all this time with us. All right, so I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor, all opposed? Show that as approved, six to zero. We are a happy group up here. Okay, we're going to move on now to 6D. I'm moving on here.
6E.
All right, it's Palm Tran's turn, 6E1. And there's Mr. Forbes, who has been waiting patiently all day. Took a little nap. After, after 3:30, we get punchy.
Looks very refreshed.
Okay. Mr. Bonlaren, introduce your guests, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate the opportunity to be up here. Simba from the County Attorney's Office is with us. Jeremy from Palm Tran, Clinton from Palm Tran as well. And this is an adoption of a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners authorizing the execution and submittal of a grant application for TD grant in the amount of $3.197090 million. We have a match that we're required of 10%. And county, as a policy that we've had, overmatches this to provide some of the additional extended service for transportation disadvantaged in about $2.275 million. That is this particular item, and we would appreciate your support. We're excited about continuing to work on our TD services. And we're excited about some of the new things that we're trying to implement to keep the cost down in that particular area as well. And that is our presentation. Clinton, do you have anything you want to add?
Very good. All right, I'm just going to make a note that the grant requires the county and its officers, agents, and employees to indemnify, defend, and hold harmless FDOT and all of its officers, agents, and employees for any claims, loss, damage, cost, charge, or expenses arising in the county's noncompliance or performance of this agreement. This indemnification obligation is not the usual one, but it's been approved by our county attorney. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve. I have a motion by the Vice Mayor. I have a second by the... I'm running out of gas here. Commissioner Kernar? All right, all in favor, all opposed? Six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm going to, yeah. Ms. Baker, you have anything you wanted to say at this point?
I did. I want to recognize our outstanding team over at Palm Tran. There was a comp toe meeting down in Broward. We were a part of the region that put it on. We had our staff involved in some of the panels. And we also won an award while we were there. So, I want to congratulate Clinton and his team and the good work. And I have to tell you, they were all over him. I told him to stop talking to my executive director. So, because he's not going anywhere. So, but yes, it was a, it was a very good conference. I went down on Sunday. And of course, on Monday, when I wasn't there, they won the award. They were giving an award.
Excellent. Congratulations. All right, this brings us to 6F1. And we have a presentation coming. And I know you've been waiting patiently to bring this to us. Career Source.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So, we have today Julia Detola. She is the President and CEO of Career Source. Erica Scarpato, she is the CFO for Career Source. And our attorney, Howard. So, today we have the budget to present. attorney, Howard. So today, we have the budget to present, the budget for next fiscal year, and Julia will also provide an update on all things Career Source.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and County Administrator. Thank you this morning for approving our Board of Directors.
Just pull a little closer to you, that's all. It's on.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this morning approving our Board of Directors on our consent agenda, and this afternoon, hopefully our budget as well. So I do want to say also that currently at the state level, there's some legislation that might be affecting the workforce in this area and in the local areas. We feel that we are at the tip of the spear with the state legislation and enacting it as it's meant to be, but if anything becomes concerning, we will definitely approach you. So we know that Career Source connects business with talent, but in the last few years, it really has been about forming a workforce strategy for our county, and we hope we have done that successfully for you. Right now, we're presenting our budget of 17.107 million dollars, and that revenue is pass-through dollars through the Department of Economic Opportunity from the Department of Labor, Health and Human Services, and Department of Agriculture, as well as our local government. Our expenditures are mostly for program implementation and for staffing and administration. So what have we done with this money? Let me tell you. So our Business Services Department has provided 273 hiring events this year alone, and we have provided services to over 1,700 businesses and provided 4,300 direct placement jobs to those businesses. Our Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act Department has provided 160 training scholarship dollars in the, a tune of 2.4 million dollars with supportive services to go with it. 75% of those clients were clients of need. That means they lived before the, below the poverty line, were skill deficient, and on public assistance. And the top training, trainings that they went into was nursing, IT, and CDLs and the trades. Our SNAP and welfare transition team saw over 1,500 individuals this year, case managed them. We were down from 3,000, which means that the rest found employment. That employment garnished wages, an average entry wage of $14.94 an hour. Those are great wages. Youth and young adult, provided 145 youth receiving workforce certifications. 55% of them were from our central office, 45 were actually from our western communities. On top of that, we provided 46 subsidized internships and 16 scholarships, many in the west as well. And for our western communities, we're proud to say that FinFRAC has kind of broken the glass ceiling. They provided jobs, sustainable wages, and 100% medical benefits to their employees. They are currently in the phase of expanding again. So far, they've hired 85 people, and they promised to move up to 200. So that is a game changer for the west. We have two other companies too that are now looking at the west to provide more jobs. We did Pahokee Job Fairs, and we are looking to help the community as well be a convenor for the next Everglades Restoration Training Grant. The good news for our county, our economic situation is very good. Our unemployment rate is 2.4%. We went from historic high to now historic low, and we are almost at full employment. We have 36,000-plus jobs available in Palm Beach County, and only 18,000 people that are unemployed at this time. We've added 31,600 jobs this year alone. That's a 5% gain over one year, and our job growth is outpacing the national average by 2.5%. And for the fifth consecutive year, the Verizon Award has shown that Palm Beach County has three cities, municipalities, Palm Beach Gardens, Jupiter, and Delray, that are in the top 50 best cities to start a personal business. So we're really proud of that. The top industries in Palm Beach County, definitely healthcare, retail, hospitality, government, education, finance, and the trades. And if I share one thing with you, it's what we've done with your money, is that during COVID, we realized that we only had two centers. We had one in Belgrade and one here in the central area on Belvedere. With our services, we know we had to go out to the community. People couldn't come to us. So with the help of our city and municipal libraries, with the help of the Riviera Beach Youth Empowerment Center, and with Northwood Rise, we have expanded our footprint, in addition to our colleges and universities, to all of these locations, where there's career counselors that are multilingual, that match the communities, helping our constituents in those areas. And that is my presentation, and I'll take any questions.
All right. I just wanted to make a, a point that I'm on the BDB now, and I know that we just were introduced to a young gentleman who was hired as a result of the services to Career Source, and I understand this is not the first candidate that they have hired from Career Source, and they've been very, very happy with the, the quality of the candidates that they've been receiving from Career Source, so I congratulate you for that. Anybody have any questions on the presentation, or is anybody ready to make a?
Mayor, if I may, I would just like to say thanks to the board and Ms. Baker. FinFRAC was huge for the Glades, and if you recall, you approved $2.3 million in cash incentive, and one of the priorities was to work with Career Source to ensure that the residents of Glade, that they receive training, Charles Devault and his team with Julia, they've been doing an amazing job, and so I just want to recognize the efforts of the board and administration.
Thank you, Dorit. Ms. McKin, Commissioner McKinley, I'm sorry.
Okay, as long as you call me to dinner.
It's almost that time, too.
Good evening. The Everglades Workforce Training Grant, we were very fortunate this year to get that fully funded, and of course, it survived the veto pen, so good, good teamwork overall. But there are some hiccups that we need to work through on that, and I look forward to, you know, working with you and maybe your partnership during the next legislative session. It is a bit of an economic hurdle for a lot of our residents out in the Glades because it's reimbursement, so the resident has to come up with the funding first, and a lot of them can't do that. So whatever political juice you have in the halls of Tallahassee would be very helpful in, in fixing some of the glitches in the program to make it more successful.
I look forward to working with you on that. Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Okay, Commissioner Kernar has made a motion to approve the Career Source budget in the amount of 17,107,040. Do I have a second? I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed, show that as a six to zero, which is as good as you can get.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, all of you.
All right, we're gonna move on now to six G one, looking for a motion to approve six G one A and B.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve items six G one A and B.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bernard. Do I have a second? I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Total amount of funding being allocated in this item is 13,766,970. Funding for this allocation is included in the county administrator's proposed fiscal 23 budget, and is subject to the approval of this body in September. That being said, all in favor, all opposed, this item is approved, six to zero. You did a great job, Chief. All right, we're gonna move on now to six H one. I see, Commissioner McKinley, you gotta be faster.
I know, I did, I did. I had my comment light on before you called that vote, but, Ms. Chief Durin, you're gonna go out pretty soon for your next round of financially assisted agencies, and there's one organization in Palm Beach County that's been the subject of a few media reports in the last week or so, and that's the Mothers Against Murders Association. I do recognize that they do not apply for any of this funding, however, they may be eligible for the next round of funding. I would just ask, a lot of these organizations are wonderful organizations to work with. Sometimes they lack the technical expertise to apply for these grants, so, or they don't know how to find out the deadlines. If, if we could reach out to them and handhold them a little bit on how to move forward and apply for these grants, and at least put them in the pot for consideration.
Yes, ma'am, we will.
Okay.
County Administrator?
Members, we, I also reached out to a funding source, LETF, because they fund a lot of this. This falls right into their bailiwick, and I have had that discussion with Chief, Deputy Chief DiMario, and so we're gonna continue to follow up on it and try to make sure that happens.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Moving right along, we're on six H one. Very humdrum, but I see our bond council's been sitting patiently waiting for this item to be approved. I've got a motion by Commissioner Kernar to approve six H one A, B, C, and D. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Seeing no further discussion, oh, Commissioner, I mean, you're just gonna say I'm good for this? All right. All in favor, all opposed, six to zero. Aren't you glad you came? All right, we now have an add-on. We're going to six H two. This is a motion to approve a mediated settlement in an amount of 1,170,579,79 dollars. Do I have, Commissioner Kernar?
So moved on the add-on six H two, and this is in regards to a taking of land needed by the county.
Second. I have a second by Commissioner Kern, a motion by Commissioner Kernar, second by Commissioner Bernard. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, six to zero. That was easy. All right, I see us coming around the home stretch here. All right, now we got a little item here, non-controversial. Where's Sherri? There she is. Let's talk about parking, yeah. All right. I know we have representatives of the Sheriff's Department here. After last time, I know there were some questions on that. We'll let Sherri make a brief presentation, since we've done this at least once, and then I know that there were questions for, on the Sheriff's Budget that a few of us had, and we'll invite the representatives of Rick Bradshaw to come on up and join us. Who's gonna take the lead on this? Sherri?
I guess I'll start it. And, you know, we have my whole team here. You're gonna move for me? Yep. So this slide, just as a reminder, we have two public hearings coming up in September. What we presented in June is a milage rate of 4.7815 countywide. The libraries is .0.5491, fire rescue MSTU 3.4581, Jupiter Fire MSTU 1.8713. The aggregate milage rate is 6.5753, and then we also have the two voted debt milage rates countywide and library. Back in June, we presented you with a balanced budget. We did get additional values from the property appraiser at the July 1, and that brings in an additional 16.5 million dollars into the budget. Of that, we would give almost a million dollars to our CRAs. There were some minor adjustments with our constitutional officers for $200,000, so that would leave us 15.3 million dollars that we could put in reserves or allocate to some other purpose, if you wanted some additional dollars for affordable housing. And that would give us a balanced budget at the current milage rate of 4.7815. Our countywide taxes is about 1.2 billion dollars. The voted debts is about 7.3 for a total of 1.228. We also include what our library and our two MSTUs look like. Our total milage rate for 2023 with the operating and the debt is 4.8104, just slightly less than the current year. So we added a new slide. We wanted to kind of talk, show you what some of our percentage changes in property values have been. So the blue line represents our annual changes in values on a percentage basis. The green line is our actual milage rate. So back in 2011, our milage rate was 4.75. We increased it slightly to our current 4.7815, where it's remained the same. But as the property values increased in 2007, we dropped our milage rate considerably, and then, you know, things really fell for values, and we ended up having to increase it much higher. So our median value home is 375,000, with a $50,000 homestead exemption, 325,000. Again, the median is right in the middle of all the homestead properties. That property owner with the 3% increase in values and the current milage rate would pay about 1.1, $1,567 in taxes, up about $51 compared to the current year.
What's the number you're using for that model? What's the average or the median price?
We're using median, which is 375,000.
Really?
It's right in the middle, so.
Yeah, but let's, let's all agree that 375 really isn't a median when you take out Century Village, Kings Point. I mean, a number I think we've seen in the papers is closer to 600.
That's probably on the market value, but with the homesteaded, if you've been in your home for a long time, your values, I always raise my hand and say, you know, I pay about $80,000 taxable values on my house because I've been in it for 14 years. But yes, I would probably sell it today, five, $600,000. So, you know, that's why that median value keeps it much lower, 'cause it's not based on market, but because it's the homesteaded properties also.
I'm just saying that when we, we make a, a presentation and we represent to our constituents that they're only gonna pay 1,000, whatever, in taxes, that's really not a true number for most of our residents. You know, if we use the number, let's say 500 instead of 600, what would the number be for a person with a house of 500?
600 is almost twice as much, so they would pay 3,000.
Well, it wouldn't be twice as much because you still have the homestead exemption in there, too, so.
But it's, the net is 325 after the homestead, so theirs would be right about that, you know.
I just think that it's not fair to continue to look at a number that really is not really the, the true median. I don't know, maybe we need to look at the mode.
Well, I can look at the average, and that's a completely different value, but the average may be less, because then you're looking, because we're only looking at homestead properties. And so that's why we pick the median, because 50% are less than that and 50% is higher. You know, it's right in the middle, but we can run a different scenario if you'd like.
Thank, I don't, I don't want to belabor it, but I just, I just think it's not a real accurate what most of our taxpayers are gonna be saddled with.
Right, okay. I include the maximum milage rate. It's a formula developed by the state years ago. It takes a look at what our prior year maximum milage rate was, what our rollback rate is based on that, and it looks at per capita Florida income. Right now, the majority maximum milage rate is 4.5124. What that really means is that any milage rate we pass greater than that amount would require a supermajority vote. So at the last meeting in June, the Commissioners, the Board, someone had suggested what would it look like if we lowered the milage rate for the increase that we received from June to July values. So we picked up an additional 1.6% in values. So again, we were balanced in June. If we lower our milage rate to 4.715, which is a .0665 decrease, we would pick up an additional $375,000 in property values. 106 of that would go to our CRAs. We still have that small adjustment for our constitutional officers, and the increase in reserves would be about $60,000. So that was, be what it looks like.
So to, just to, again, emphasize, last time we sat and looked at this, we were at about 13.45% increase in property value overall for the county. The property appraiser now has given a number closer to 15%.
Correct.
So the budget that the county administrator brought to us at our last meeting, we could fund that budget without any changes to her budget, and we would be able to reduce the milage from the current number of 4.7815 to 4.71 without making any reductions in the budget.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so we'll assume with the 4.715 in the change in the values, and the milage rate, the same with the homestead exemption, my median 375,000, with a $50,000 homestead exemption is 325. We'll go all the way down to the bottom line. That homeowner would see about a 30, $29 savings compared to the $51, so it's about a $20 difference annually. And again, we just left with the same maximum milage rate. It's still, the 4.715 would be greater, so we would still need the five votes to upset the milage rate. the milage rate. And we open it up for questions.
All right, we have a couple of questions. Not gonna surprise you, I'm gonna be trying to see if my colleagues will accept the fact that we can do it, was brought before us at the last meeting for a little bit less and give our residents a little bit of a break. Does, do you want to have a presentation from the Sheriff's Office?
I don't think we need a presentation, but I'd love, since the issue is ripe regarding lowering the milage rate and the original budget request from the sheriff, I'd like to be able to just have a quick conversation with one of the representatives.
Can we ask the Sheriff's Representatives, come on up?
I don't have many questions. I don't know how many questions members of the board have, but I'll be relatively quick.
Okay.
So the situation we're presented with is, there's an opportunity to utilize the funds that we were not expecting, the increase in value, to either lower the milage rate or fund the budget as presented. But there's one other option, and I wanted to run this by the Sheriff's Office. And first of all, thank you for what your agency does, they're outstanding. I appreciate your appearance here today. I appreciate the dialogue that we've had behind closed doors, and I particularly appreciate the service and sacrifice of the men and women of PBSO. And submitting the budget, I think on May 5th, it was a larger increase than what is before the board now. And one of the concerns that I had was, and I appreciate, by the way, the administrator and Chair, or Chief Deputy DiMario and the sheriff, sort of proactively agreeing to the $10 million reduction. My question to you today is, and you've answered this in private, and it was a very acceptable answer, but what is it that we're not funding by taking that 10 million away from PBSO?
And I'm gonna ask you to push that button in front of you there.
And the context here, George, is that we're presented with.
Slide.
George, the context is we're presented with an additional 15, was it 15 million? That through increased values and collections. So there's an opportunity to fund that 10 million, but I want the board to be aware of what we're not being able to fund if we keep it at the current request that was negotiated between the administrator and the Sheriff's Office.
Understood. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak. A little echo here with this, interesting.
It's an echo chamber.
Going down there. We worked with your staff, and we took a look, it's a process, and we work with your team all the time, year-round. And when we took a look at the entire picture, the commitment from the county, the one-time use money last year, all the values, and decided that this was something that was workable, some of it is related to timing, right? Like the capital. I know you're very concerned about capital. We do have heavy investment in capital, not buildings, but cars and technology and such. You see in that out-year a large number, because everything that's been deferred goes to that year. But of course, we work with you guys, we work for alternate funding, we've had some sales tax revenue come in to offset that. So a lot of what's gonna change is related to timing, timing of issues, capital that's in the budget, timing of FFNE charges from the county, going back into some facilities. So some of that is happening naturally anyway because supply chains are disrupted. So we certainly need a robust funding of these items to be able to keep going forward. But the way it fell out in the request administrator, the way she explained your prerogatives, it made sense for us to be able to make that adjustment with no problem, no issues related to public safety. And say, I'm gonna say that again, no issues related to public safety.
It's not money coming from the districts or from deputies on the roads or things like that, okay? Retention of deputies is a huge deal. Retention of law enforcement officers is a huge deal. And there is an unborn cost to agencies or unrecognized cost to agencies that bring officers in, train them up to their standards, and then they go off to greener pastures. What is the status, what's your perspective then on, because I know that the budget before us includes some collective bargaining agreements between the PBA and the Sheriff's Office. And I for one am delighted to see that go through, because I want to make sure that we're retaining deputies to the best of your ability. And some of that has to do with money, quite frankly. Other is, you know, culture of the agency, working environment, things like that. How does this agency, or how does the leadership of the agency see the retention issue specifically to PBSO?
Right now, there's none. We're doing very, very well. I hate to say it, but I do poach from other cities, municipalities, all's fair and war and HR, so. But I haven't had a problem. We just filled, I just filled 15, 20 vacancies actually, and I have more. I have a list, they keep coming, everybody wants to work for the sheriff. So we haven't had that, a retention problem. People are retiring, they're in drop, they go out, but we're easily replaced. So no problem on that front.
Very good, and I think it's probably a stated goal of this board that we want to be in that position. We want our county law enforcement arm to be the greener pastor, so to speak. I know that presents some pressures and problems for maybe some of the municipal and state agencies, but we're very much proud of the way that we fund our agency and the way that you treat your deputies and non-sworn personnel. One of the issues that's come up tangentially are the law enforcement service agreements. And I'm confident that when there's a merger between PBSO and another agency, and I know that Boynton Beach is on the table at this point, I'm confident in my discussions with you and Mr. Foreman, that there are no costs passed on to the ad valorem budget for the unincorporated parts of the county. Can you just walk us through very briefly how you ensure that those two separate budgets stay bifurcated and don't overlap in terms of subsidies?
They don't. We will make, when we finish our process of looking into all the different things, what their budget is, what are they, what contracts they have, we'll give them a price, which would be a full price of what we expect and what we would pay, and what it would be probably down the road, you know, the increases that are built into that. And they either accept the package at that number, or we won't make a deal. It's not gonna cost us money to bring on another municipality, especially one as large as Boynton Beach. That's probably the largest we've ever merged with. So, and I, George can give you numbers on, you know, where we are. I don't have the numbers yet on our side, but I know what we're looking at, and it looks like we can make a deal.
But it's fair to say that when there is a merger, the unincorporated portions of the county through the ad valorem taxes aren't subsidizing that city?
They shouldn't be, no.
I think that's really all the questions that I had. There is an opportunity here. Well, let me put it this way. One of the things that concerned me about the out-year budgets are the capital improvements. And I think there was about 100 something million coming up in the next five years. We have this $15 million here. If your request is fully funded, the original submission, what would that 10 million go to, and could it help buy down capital costs in the future?
What, I know the first thing right off the top of my head, what I do, because of some things that they've done in the state as far as our drones, we have a full-time 24/7 drone, drone unit, and according to the state, our drones are not on a list, and they can't be used as of January. Replace that is gonna cost hundreds of thousands of dollars if I have to replace it, and I would have to do it over a long period of time to do that. And plus, we have some drones that we're getting that are million-dollar drones that I'd like to put in service. But it's gonna cost, because we have to take off at an airport, so we need to rent space just to do that. So there's a lot of other things in cars, vehicles. We have a problem purchasing cars. I think we go in September, we can order them, but I haven't gotten what we purchased or requested from last year's budget. So we need to carry forward that, and I'd like to be able to buy some of the unmarked cars off the lot, which costs more, to be able to get the vehicles. Because I have task force and all the people that are requesting, you know, different types of cars, you know, to use in surveillance and undercover work, and I can't get them. I can't get them from the state. I can get them off the lot, so it costs more money. So that would be another thing. And then maybe George has other projects that I'm not aware of, that, you know, he would be able to put the money in. We can use that money, I can bring up the body cams. The money that we have, the $21 million that we move from our capital expenditures to buy the body cams, that may take us, and I'm not gonna give numbers because we haven't negotiated a price, we're ready to, but that may take us for two, maybe three years, the 21 million, but it's a five-year project. So how do I pay for the next two years? Probably because anywhere between 7 and 10 million dollars to do that, to fund it, if you want to fund it, the way it's, to do it properly. I would use it for that, put that aside to use down the road.
So the IST funds, I think we allocated 21 million in fiscal year 2022. That's not gonna cover the cost of body cameras anymore?
No, it wouldn't cause the total cost, because it's many more millions than that. And like I said, we haven't negotiated the price down, but I don't think I'm gonna get to 21 million dollars from the price they've given us. Hillsborough County, I have 800 people, and as was 25 million. I have 1,700 deputies and probably 2,000 vehicles to do it. So take that number and see what it's gonna cost us to do it the right way, to outfit everyone.
And I, you know, I think both the agency and the community want it done the right In bringing up law enforcement service agreements for capital improvements like that in those jurisdictions in the city that you cover through agreements, shouldn't the cities be contributing to the capital costs for body cameras?
Boynton already has their cameras, so we would just follow them into ours. But then again, I gotta see what their contract is, when does their contract expire?
Sure, but you have a litany of other agreements in place already, Lake Worth, I mean, we can go on Wellington. Shouldn't that, shouldn't their municipal ad valorem taxes be helping fund the body cameras as well?
We can ask, we can ask. I'm not saying they're gonna, they're gonna do it, or, but there'd be other areas, you know, out west in Belgrade, they're not gonna be able to afford to do it. And I, if they didn't have us on board, we'd have to do it anyway. So to me, those are cities that are not gonna be able to pay, and I could add in Lake Park and Mangonia Park as well, they're not gonna be able to afford that. You know, Wellington probably could in Royal Palm. I don't know about any of the other, I don't know about Lake Worth if they could, I really don't. But those other municipalities, I could tell you, they would not have the money to do it. And to me, it would be, you know, detrimental not to have it in those areas for those people in that community.
Yeah, I think if the agency's gonna utilize them, it should be across the entire agency, or at least the patrol portions of the agency. I'm not getting into tactics here, but I don't think there should be one city without them that uses the Sheriff's Office and one that does. Beyond that, are there any larger issues in law enforcement in general that this community and this board should be aware of that we need to anticipate for?
Not on the operational side of the House. We're good, we appreciate everything you do for us. I like to brag about our department. I think we have the best train, the best equipped, and I travel all over the country, and all over the world for that matter, and I always visit other municipalities and talk to the police and what they have. No one has, and I mean this seriously, no one has what we have. You know, we even have more canines than New York City has. So there's a lot of things that the people on this committee or commission do for us that none of the other cities are even capable or even consider doing it. So we're very happy with the relationship we have with the commission. You guys treat us very, very well, very well.
Well, I think basically, we appreciate the support and comments. You know, I think the board should consider that it's been a stated goal to have body worn cameras implemented, or at least funded for the Sheriff's Office. And because of, I'm sure, a host of reasons, increase in inflation, increases in technology just in general, if we're going to really be able to help the Sheriff's Office execute on the body worn camera issue, we're being told today that it's gonna cost some more money. And we have an additional 15 million available. I know we want to talk about buying down the milage rate, or I think Commissioner McKinley had a concept of applying those funds to the affordable housing fund, but I think it's something that the board should consider.
Well, I'd like to say one other thing that George reminded me of, mental health. We now have, I have 10 deputies, 10 detectives and 10 therapists that work in our behavioral service unit, among other people, but they specifically do the calls that we get on specific individuals, people that are red flagged. We have, to date, from 2018 to date, 1,900-plus cases that we've handled in our behavioral service unit, which is huge. We've done about 250 RPOs, risk protection orders, and we don't only just go there and, you know, take their guns and do things, we go there with the services that they may need. We go back to these locations, we visit to see if they, if they're still on their medications, if they were instructed to take meds, do they need other services? So it's an ongoing thing to try to, I'd say, keep the lid on, on having some really serious crisis in the county, in a school shooting or something like that. We can't do it all, and I'd like to add people to that. You know, I'd like to have several more teams of therapists and detectives to do that, because we're a growing county, and we do have a lot of people that need services, and we don't have facilities to keep these people. You know, we, we'll do something with them, we'll put them in, you know, three days later, they're back out on the street. So we do, you know, revisit. And we also, if they leave our area, we notify where they're going. So the other, and whether they're out of state or not, to make sure that those individuals that they're flagged and who they are and, you know, what they may be capable of doing. So I'd like to use some of the money if we could for that.
And that's not including the jail, which is the biggest mental health provider in the county, unfortunately.
We got about a third between drug addiction, alcohol addiction, and mental health are in our jail, and they shouldn't be there, they really shouldn't.
Well, I appreciate your candor and professionalism. Thank you for being here today, and we'll make that, we'll make this concept part of the dialogue going forward on how to attack and resolve this issue.
Commissioner McKinley.
Yes, thank you. I think what we have before us today is the Sheriff's Office, appreciative of the $42 million in additional revenues that we are budgeting in this coming year's budget, and I think we should leave it at that. I think if we want to help the mental health treatment capacity in Palm Beach County, we should do it before they get to the jail and fund it in different programs rather than in the Sheriff's Office. I would love to, obviously, when you are ready and you've got a, you know, you've gone out for RFP and you know the exact dollar amount of what body cams are going to cost, we have the budget amendment process that you can come back before this budget, and I'm sure you will have the receptive ear of my colleagues up here to get that budget amendment passed. But I don't think it's something we should fund until we know what the dollar amount is, the additional dollar amount is going to be. You also have the flexibility, thanks to recent legislation, to move dollars around to temporarily fund that without coming to us for an amendment if you see the need to do it. My concern, and Commissioner Kerner, you are this staunch advocate for law enforcement on this commission, and I appreciate everything that you advocate for, and I am supporting this $42 million increase. But when you talk about having the municipalities that we contract with find their portion of whatever, you know, the deputies that are out, for instance, in the Glades, having those tri-cities be able to fund the cost of the body cams in their local contracts, it's not possible for them. And George, it was a few years ago, you gave me the dollar, the amount that for every dollar you spend on law enforcement services in the Glades, you only collect 54 cents. So the rest of the county is subsidizing the cost of law enforcement services in the Glades, and I'm sure that's changed a little bit over the years, but probably not too much. So I would prefer to see if we have additional dollars, that they're invested in those communities to help raise those tax bases so that we're not subsidizing 46 cents on the dollar across Palm Beach County to provide those services. And at some point, those communities can fully fund the cost of their law enforcement services contracts with you. services contracts with you. So, and I, and I'm also concerned, I think we move forward with 42 million, if we go with 52 million, that's going to be a carry forward next year, and then there's going to be an additional on top of the 52 million rather than the additional budget increase coming from the 42 million dollar point. And we know with legislative action, it'd be very hard for us to come down from those dollars. So I'm, I'm not supportive right now of adding any additional dollars to that 42 million dollar increase. When the time comes and they're seeking a budget amendment, when they know the exact dollar amount, I would be supportive of making sure all of those body cameras are funded. And Chief, you and I spoke yesterday, and I, I gave you a heads up, I was going to bring this up. I'm still 100% supportive and adamant and ask for reconsideration of the policy the sheriff's department has on their deputies carrying and administering Narcan. And so, and I know your position on that, but I, I told you I was going to say that publicly on the record. In terms of the other issues, Sherri, you know, we're discussing a possible millage rate decrease, which is fine right now, although I don't think it's really going to benefit the people who are struggling the most, and that's a lot of our renters, who aren't going to see that, the benefit of a reduction in the cost of their rent. What is the outlook for the coming years? I mean, are we going to continue to see a 15% increase, or do you expect that to level off?
I don't think we would see another 15%, but I think it'll eventually start to level off. I think our property appraiser mentioned that she expected the values to start leveling off. I think home sales are slowing down, I don't know that they've stopped completely, but were things sold in a day, maybe staying on the market a little bit longer.
Okay, and then on the ballot in November, you talked about the $50,000 homestead exemption, but on the ballot in November, there is an additional homestead exemption. What will the economic impact of that proposed exemption be?
We'd have to look and see, I haven't seen any numbers on it yet.
Right, so we could see our revenues decrease further, and that's across all of our ad valorem rates, including fire rescue, correct?
Correct.
And then, you know, the question was posed to me yesterday, we've transferred ARPA dollars into the general revenue to make up for lost, lost revenues, sort of a cash flow issue that we did. Does proposing, and when we've used ARPA to plug the holes in budget shortfalls, revenue shortfalls, does using, does proposing a tax decrease affect, affect, does it put us in a bad position? Because that's forbidden in the ARPA dollars.
Correct, but when we did our revenue replacement calculations, it doesn't take into effect anything to do with property taxes. So we only look at those non-ad valorem revenues, like our communication service tax and our state shared revenues, those type of things, when we do the calculation. So if we had included property taxes, we'd have a whole different calculation, but those are completely excluded from the calculations.
Okay. I personally think that the best use of this additional 15 million dollars that we're seeing based on these latest calculations would be to put that in the affordable housing pot and to provide housing for those that currently don't have it. That's how I'd like to see these additional revenues be used, rather than a slight decrease in the millage rate, which would be extremely difficult for us to try to get that back moving forward. We've held this millage rate steady for how many years?
12.
Yeah, for more, for a dozen years. I think that is tremendous, I think we should stick to that policy and use these revenues to provide housing for people and lift up that tax base in the cities, particularly that can't afford to fully fund the cost of their law enforcement services. And then to look to your budget amendments when you come back to us, when you have those capital needs over the next 12 months.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. All right, I'm going to opine and then we'll go to public comment. Back in 2004, the millage rate was 4.5. The next year, the county reduced the millage rate to 4.45, took it down a full half a point there, or five tenths. It went down to 4.28 in 2008, went down to 3.78 in 2007, stayed at 3.78 in 2008, started coming back up in 2009 to 4.3, went to 4.75 in 2010, and it's, went to, in 2011 at the current rate of 4.7815. So I think that prior commissions have recognized that there are times when you need to give our taxpayers a break, and I think we're there. People are paying more for insurance, food, fuel, rent, and they are in stress, and I think that we're not asking today, or I'm not asking today, that this body think about how to cut a budget. We're just saying that a budget that our county administrator thoughtfully put together based upon the revenues that she saw as the potential revenues in next year, put together a balanced budget. Our sheriff's office was willing to negotiate a reduced increase, and let's all make sure we don't see this as a defunding of the police, but that it's a, a reduction in the increase. And I think to take this back to 4.71, which would put us exactly where we were when the county administrator brought us the original budget, would show that our residents' pain, and it's us too, because I'm paying property taxes, it's my pain too. I think that we need to make this modest adjustment, and I think that next year, if we have to bring it back up to 4.785, or whatever that number is, I would have no problem if I'm still sitting here next year. So we're going to take public comment, but I'm going to hope that my colleagues see this as an opportunity to give our residents a little bit of a break. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As for me, I do support giving our residents a break, and I would support reducing the millage rate to the 4.715.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized again.
Yeah, I just had one question for Sherri. So what is the millage, what would the millage rate be on the proposed debt service of the $200 million housing bond?
I didn't bring it with me, but I think it's about .028. Maybe somebody upstairs can text it to me, let me just make sure I don't have it here. Let me confirm it. I have someone upstairs that can.
All right, why don't we take public comment while they're getting that information from upstairs?
Very good. We have about 10 cards, public speaking, and then several non-speaking cards. Alan S. Schwartz, and then Lisa Franklin.
Mr. Schwartz, what's your?
You have three minutes.
Goodness, thank you for the time. What a day, my God, we've been here for a while. I'm honored to read a letter by Marsha Marquino, the executive director of NAMI here in Palm Beach County. She had to leave to take care of the office events, and then I've also signed up for a few more minutes to speak. So the letter is very poignant. Dear Commissioners, good morning. I am writing to you in several roles. I am the executive director of NAMI, National Alliance of Mental Health in Palm Beach County, and I am the executive committee, and I am the executive committee of Florida Mental Health Advocacy Coalition, an organization made up of 25 mental health advocacy groups from around the state. And most importantly, in my life, I am the mother of a young man who engaged in a 15-year struggle with substance use disorder. About half of that time, from the age of 17, when he injured his neck in a car accident, at the age of 24, my son's, my son's opioids were prescribed by legitimate pain management physicians. Once we came to the realization that the opioids were actually making his pain worse, and that much of the pain management education of my son's physicians was provided by pharmaceutical corporation, corporation representatives, he was deep into addiction. Stopping prescribed opiates led my son to accessing them on the street. My son is on the autism spectrum, and to him, a beneficial side effect of opioid use was escape from the reality of his difficult life. Over the 15 years, we called 911 to our home more times than I can count, also more times than I can count the times I performed CPR on my son, the times I gave him mouth-to-mouth resuscitation, the times I found him lifeless and blue, and times I heard his death rattle. In every case, it was Narcan that resuscitated my son. After calling 911, sometimes fire rescue arrived first, sometimes it was PBSO, each time I was provided, providing CPR for mouth-to-mouth resuscitation, trying to keep him alive until the Narcan arrived. In the final years of my son's opioid use, we were able to obtain and use Narcan ourselves and did not have to provide the interim resuscitation while waiting for Narcan to arrive. Today, my son has been opioid-free for two years. He works full-time, lives independently, and actively participates in recovery. There are many, many times over those 15 years that I cert, that I was certain I would outlive my son. Without the availability of Narcan, that would have been a sad reality many times over. Having to experience a loved one having an overdose more than a dozen times, and being able, and being the one to try to keep my precious son alive until Narcan arrived, I can tell you that those minutes and seconds are crucial, as I know.
I hate to cut you off, but you're-
There are no legitimate reasons for PBSO officers to not carry Narcan.
Commissioner McKinley has a question for you.
A three-minute thing?
Oh, your, your three minutes are up, but Commissioner McKinley is going to help you extend your time.
I'm going to help you extend this a little bit.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Alan, in summary, what is it you're asking for?
Continue.
No, 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 not to continue, just in summary, don't read any more letters, you can submit the letter for the record, but what is it you're here today asking for?
We'll submit this, thank you.
Thank you very much for presenting that, and the clerk will take that and it'll be received and filed.
All right, we have Lisa Franklin and Micah Robbins. I'm sure we've lost some members of the public.
I can't believe they went home.
All right, so Micah Robbins and Lisa Franklin are not here. Diane Jehel, Lisa Franklin again, Stacy Katz.
I have to try, right? So I was going to present my own, I was here the last Commissioner's meeting.
You're Ms. Katz, right?
Yes, Ms. Katz.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Ms. Katz, Stacy Katz, Palm Beach County resident, former police officer of the New York City Police Department. That being said, I want to also, like Commissioner Kernier said, thank the police department for all they do and the hard work and, and giving your lives and putting your lives on the line for all of us. That being said, I am here today to discuss Narcan, okay? I also, being a mom, and my son struggling for 15 years with, with a drug addiction disorder, substance use disorder, it's very near and dear to my heart, obviously, and these things that are carried in my little pocket here are Narcan. There's no reason why we cannot have our deputies carry it. So what, I'm going to surpass my minutes, and I'm going to read a letter that was given for the press release from Maureen Killian for immediate release on the addiction recovery advocates, advocates from SEFRA. And it says, "We, your community of addiction and recovery advocates, your friends, neighbors, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncle, grandparents and friends demand that Rick Bradshaw act in line with the needs of his community. We have been asking Sheriff Bradshaw to take the step for more than seven years. We have met nothing but resistance from the popularly elected Democratic sheriff. We now will be asking Palm Beach County Commission to make its collective opinion known on this critical life-saving measure. Additionally, due to our ongoing advocacy, the mayor of Palm Beach County has asked the sheriff on, or his representatives to attend the meeting and answer his constituents regarding the lack of any policy on carrying naloxone. We invite all media to cover on commission's meeting. We will be there again and ask the sheriff to uphold the following statement on his PBSO website. Choose life first, quote, 'Choose life first and all other considerations must come second.' PBSO Sheriff Rick Bradshaw fails to endorse this evidence-based tool to decrease the morbidity and mortality associated with the ongoing opioid public health crisis. CDC drug overdose deaths in the U.S. top 100,000 annually. There will be an estimated 103,006 drug overdoses deaths in the United States during the 12-month period ending April 2021, and an increase of 28.5 from the 78,000 deaths during the same year period before. USA White House on November 17, 2021, national drug policy released a model law providing states with the templates pass their own legu, their own legislation to approve access to naloxone, a drug that reverses opioid overdoses. Florida Attorney General, support expansion of naloxone. Florida Department of Health, Palm Beach County Opioid Response Steering Committee. Florida Sheriff's Association endorses law enforcement to carry naloxone. National Sheriff Association endorses law enforcement to carry naloxone. Association of Chiefs of Police endorses carrying naloxone. Naloxone has been in existence here in the U.S. since 1971. I know for a fact that the New York City Police carries it since 2014. I would ask the commission, while we sat here and listened to parking, which is very important, I get it, but we're talking about lives here, and I would like to be able to sit here and present with my, my cohorts and my public, my people that live in this, in this area as public citizens, to have this addressed."
Thank you, and again, I, like I said before, when we're talking about the supervisory elections, the sheriff is an independently elected constitutional officer, and we work with Sheriff Bradshaw, and, but he's got the final say on what his deputies are going to do as far as procedure. Commissioner McKinley?
Stacy, thanks for being here, thanks for your continued advocacy, and I know that it's frustrating to hear that answer, that's just the way the system, the elected official constitutional officer system is set up with the Board of County Commissioners, but if between now and November 15th, which will be my last day as a commissioner, the sheriff came to us with a budget amendment request to, to fund naloxone being carried by all of his deputies, I would support it.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Sax?
Thank you so much for your advocacy, it's very passionate and I appreciate it, very compelling. I just want to make sure that I understood. So Commissioner McKinley, what we're going to do is when the sheriff comes back for his final budget request, that, that he is, that his office is committed to carrying these, these life-saving substances with them, is that what's going to happen?
Commissioner Sax, this is the final request today.
Okay, well, then I'd like to hear from one of the sheriff's representatives, if they could come forward.
Just so we're clear on the timeline, we, the, the substance of the budget is not decided until September, is that correct?
We're going to set the maximum millage tonight, and then we will have two budget hearings, but I don't presume that the budget is going to be adjusted with respect to the sheriff's office. I guess you need to come back to the microphone and help Commissioner Sax understand the process.
Sure, because I heard Commissioner McKinley say that, that she has gotten a commitment from your office, detective.
No, 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 I did not say that.
Okay, well then let's, if you could restate it.
Yeah, let me clarify that. What I said is, we are going to pass a budget in September. If sometime after we pass that budget, between September and November, the sheriff has a change of heart and his officers want to carry, he wants his officers to carry Narcan, and you came back to us to amend the already approved budget, I would support that. But it's, this decision is strictly in the hands of the sheriff, it's not our jurisdiction other than to fund the request if they present it to us.
Well, if I may, Mayor, who, who will speak on behalf of the sheriff's office?
I will.
Thank you, and I enjoyed meeting with you before today's hearing. What is the issue with not carrying the substance to save lives?
I will bring the message back to the sheriff, but I know he's, he's, has told me in the past, he does not want to have his deputies carry it. We're not firefighters, we're not- We're not firefighters, we're not paramedics. We have a great fire rescue in Palm Beach County, and he doesn't think it's necessary for us to have it.
I'm sorry, but a few minutes ago, you mentioned, and I absolutely agreed, that the number-one issue in law enforcement is mental health.
Yes.
And that our jail is our largest mental health facility we have in the county, and that we have detectives and counselors, which should we pay for to help with mental health issues? Is this not, and I'm sorry, but you are representing the sheriff.
Yes, I am.
Right. So in your professional opinion, this does not, does this follow that our deputies should be carrying life-saving substances that would help someone who is having a mental health crisis issue?
Well, you know, there's a lot of things that you're asking us to do as far as Narcan's concerned, but what are you doing on the front end? You know, there's a lot of things that we could do to prevent people from using drugs. I don't see that many programs in place that do that. I don't see really honest, legitimate rehabilitation clinics. We just had a double overdose of fentanyl in a rehab facility in Wellington where that is supposed to be drug-free. So there's all those other factors, and I can't, I have not found, to my knowledge, not one time when we responded and got there before fire rescue that anybody died. Not one time.
I appreciate your opinion, and maybe this discussion should be that we should take the funds and put them at the front end, as you say, in mental health prevention. Maybe we should fund more mental health treatment facilities rather than fund additionally law enforcement. I have never, I probably agree with you there, although I do think that this money that the taxpayers have given is so important to help those who can't help themselves. In whatever way we, as a county commission, can do it, whether with law enforcement, who are many times the first responders at a scene, I've been in prosecution for years, Detective, and I know that many times 911, there's a police officer there. So, and I disagree, sir, respectfully, just let me finish.
Okay, go ahead.
Because this is a passionate issue. This is life and death for a lot of folks. And maybe, and maybe that law enforcement should be carrying life-saving devices when it comes to mental health crises, because they're the first ones there. Or maybe we should take some of that money that we're going to spend on law enforcement and put it over on mental health treatment centers, which really need a lot of funding. So this is a discussion that we will be having. I appreciate your opinion, and thank you for, I didn't want to put you on the spot, but you are on the spot.
Don't you put me on the spot. I disagree with you.
This is a big, yes.
I totally disagree with you.
Let's respectfully. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your candor. Trying to bridge this gap, because obviously it's coming apparent that the board has an interest in what is not our policy to set, but one that we have an interest in. Is there a way to fashion or bring back to the sheriff the possibility of authorizing deputies to carry Narcan, but not requiring it and not requiring its use?
I can go back to him and ask him, but I could tell you what his answer is going to be now. It's going to be no.
Okay.
You know, let me just say one thing. Mental health, drug addiction, homeless, all these things that thrust upon us that law enforcement is able to or should be able to resolve or fix, and that's not the case. There's a lot of social, economic issues that are the cause. Drug addiction, you know, that's not a law enforcement issue. You know, we do, on every single overdose, on every single arrest that we make, we seize the phones of the individuals, we download all the information, if we have the codes that we can get into it. We've been doing this since 2010, when we were doing all the pill mills with the state attorney, and we cross-reference that to see what numbers come up, former drug dealers, and we look to go after those people, and we do, and we're successful. We've been successful in a couple of homicide prosecution for selling drugs and someone overdosing on. So we do a lot, but you're going to ask us to put another tool in our toolbox. You know, I think it's asking too much of what we do. I understand everybody's passion, and I do, and the gentleman that just spoke, I feel for him. His son got addicted by pharmaceutical company and doctors, and we've worked on that. And we closed over 100 pill mills back in, from 2010 until, you know, 2015, all the time I was in the violent crimes division. So we worked very hard to do that, but now you're asking us that we have to save every life that we get to, and we haven't been there, and not one person that I can see in the couple of years that I look back that we lose a life when the deputies got there before fire rescue, and I'm going to tell you, it was eight times, and we did CPR, fire rescue got there, gave him the Narcan, and took him to the hospital, and nobody died. You know, when someone's heart stops, Narcan doesn't revive him, CPR does, and that's what our deputies are trained to do. That's it. I will bring the message back to the sheriff. Commissioner McKinley?
You've opened up the can of worms here. So I have to ask Chief DiMario, what makes Palm Beach County so special that you feel the need not to carry it? There are large sheriff's offices, medium sheriff's offices, and small sheriff's offices across Florida, large city police departments, small city police departments across Florida that are all carrying Narcan and don't have any problem doing it and think that it's a best practice. So I want to thank you in the same breath, because you've given me the best argument not to cut $15 million and cut the millage rate, because we can use those dollars to beef up treatment services and housing and all the other problems that lead to addiction and mental health crises. But why do so many of your counterparts across Florida are fine doing this? Why should your life resuscitation be dependent on the county you live in?
I will bring the message back to the sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've beaten that to death. All right, do we have any more cards?
Mayor, the only cards we have are non-speaking. There's eight non-speaking in support of the issue we just discussed, and I'll attach or file those with the clerk.
All right, I'm passing the gavel to my vice mayor, and I am going to make a motion to set the maximum millage at 4.715 percent. Do I have a second?
Maxing.
If we're setting the not-to-exceed rate tonight, and that's one of the proposals, yes.
So we have a motion by Mayor Weinroth and a second by Commissioner Bernard for the millage not to exceed, I think it was 4.715, is that correct?
Yep. Commissioner McKinley, you are recognized.
Right. Sherri, if we were to set the millage rate at 4.7815 not to exceed, we could still reduce it when we came back in September?
Yes.
God forbid a hurricane should come between now and then. I can't support this. I really want to. I'm really proud of this board for holding the millage rate steady at 4.7815 for 12 years. You know, just a few weeks ago, I was on the losing end of another vote where this board, by a vote of five to two, supported asking the voters to increase the millage rate by adding, I think, Sherri, you recently estimated .028 mills to the millage rate to support a housing bond.
And that was based on $100 million for the first issue, but by the time we do a second $100 million over a kind of time period, we could be looking at a millage rate of about .0436 is what our estimate was at the max.
So I just, I can't understand why we're okay increasing it on one hand, and now all of a sudden we find our need to decrease it on the other hand, when we've got such serious needs in this county. You heard from the community advocates, I mean, we've seen 95% of the overdoses in this county are happening because of fentanyl. That requires four to five doses of Narcan, not just one. We do have the housing crisis. The voters will decide how they want to move forward on that. I mean, there are a lot of things that Ms. Baker probably had needs for that she didn't put forward. The sheriff obviously had needs that he is delaying, the reason he was able to scale back his request by $10 million. Just don't think it's the time. I think we set it at the maximum of 4.7815, and if we haven't been hit by a hurricane between now and September, maybe we reconsider that, but I have concerns about lowering it and hitting a recession, hitting some other thing, and never being able to recoup that. You know, going forward, that the political fortitude to increase property taxes is not going to be there for you, and I think this puts you in a bad spot moving forward when we're not going to see these types of economic successes in the future.
Mayor Weinroth?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, our residents have had to tighten their belts. They're dealing with, again, increased rent, increased insurance, if they can get the insurance. They're dealing with gas prices that have been hovering around $5 a gallon, and somehow, when you have a budget, you live within it. And I'm sure, you know, you'd probably like to drive in a bigger car than the one that you drive in now, but you have a budget, and each one of us has to live within that budget, and I think that our county can always find a way to spend more money. There are plenty of places for us to put it, whether it's mental health, whether it's housing, whether, you know, we can go through a litany, educational literacy. I mean, I've said here at this spot that the biggest issue as far as affecting our prison population is the fact that the literacy is only running at about 56% in our county, which is something that we need to address, because if people aren't reading at grade level at the end of third grade, they're going to have trouble for the rest of their educational time. I am committed to the fact that we need to live within our means. Our county administrator came forward with us, and we have not taken a penny off of the budget that she carried to us. She well-thought-out budget, and I think that we owe it to our residents to take this opportunity. We don't see, you're right, we don't see a 15% increase every year, but we are going to see a significant increase in next year, because, remember, we're looking in arrears. So we're already six months into this year, and we know the numbers are continuing to rise. We will probably have the same ability next year. We'll max out the 3% for homesteaded properties. We'll probably max out the 10% on non-homesteaded properties. I don't think we have to spend every possible dollar that's out there. This is an opportunity to finally give our residents just a little bit of a respite, and I think that we owe it to them, and I am really committed to seeing this 4.715 approved today as a maximum millage. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you. Procedurally, how many commissioners need to vote today to maintain the 4.7815?
Today, we just need a normal majority vote. The five out of seven, the five votes that we need is in September because of the maximum millage rate. So whatever goes in September, I need five votes to pass a millage rate. But today, I just need a simple majority.
We're getting close.
But I would like to have five votes today, because then I feel like I might, would keep five votes in September.
I know that we'll have five votes today.
I agree.
Well, I, believe me, I would love nothing more than to put on my resume that we lowered the millage rate, but our duty as a government requires me to maintain the millage rate. We've had a litany of public speakers throughout the last several months speak to this Board of County Commissioners about the need in the community, and I am very appreciative of your position and the way that you've articulated it, but I certainly haven't had constituents banging on my door to return $20 to the average homeowner, where there is a lot of good we could do with the residual funds and maintaining the millage rate in the future. My bigger fear is that, God forbid, there is a recession. It's very difficult to raise the millage rate to sustain the government's necessary operations during those times. Fortunately, the boards in the past apparently have had that fortitude and courage, and I hope that we would as well. But I would assume that from a practical perspective and a political perspective and a policy perspective, it's hard to do that in the middle of the most difficult economic times, which hopefully will not befall us. So for those reasons and many more, I will be opposing the motion that is on the table.
All right. Commissioner Sacks, did you turn your light off?
I did.
Okay. Sherri, I have a question for you. If you can go back a couple of slides, you had a slide that showed the percentage change of millage and a percentage change of values. Yep, that's the slide. So my question to you is, when you reduced, or when previous boards reduced the millage, and it looks like that's back in 2010 that that happened, what was the impact, the overall dollar impact, do you know, the dollar impact to the budget at that time?
I don't. From 20, you know, when they increased it from around 2009 to 2010, I don't know. Lisa, were you working at the, I think you have a newer staff at the table now, so that we can look it up.
And in the same vein, do we know, do you know what the increase from the increased property values that increased in 2008, what that impact, what that impact was?
Lisa's going to look up the history, and she might be able to tell us what the changes in property taxes were from year to year.
In 2009, the countywide property taxes were $605 million. In 2010, they were $613 million. And then in 2011, they dropped to $603 million.
So when they, so I'm just trying to, so when it hit the peak, you had 600, was it 605 million? Is that?
In 2009, was 605 million? Yes.
So that's, so that's when we started seeing the drop.
So that the property values were falling. So in 2007 or 2008 was probably our peak.
2008, 2007 was the peak at $688 million.
So for, between 2009 and 2010, the millage rate had to be raised to basically keep the actual taxes about the same, the actual revenue, because it went from 605 to 613. So that just kind of kept it level, and then even raising it up to 4.75 the following year, we saw a little bit of a drop, about $10 million. So even raising it to 4.75 didn't even get you back to where it was the previous year.
Is there anybody else have a comment on this?
Just a vote.
All right. So we have a motion by our mayor and a second by Commissioner Bernard to set the maximum millage rate for Palm Beach County fiscal year '22, '23 to 4.715. And we will do this, Madam Clerk, by real call, please. And we will do this, Madam Clerk, by roll call, please.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerner?
No.
Commissioner Marino? Commissioner McKinley?
Can you repeat that, please?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Weinroth?
Yes.
So I have four aye, two nay.
Motion passes.
I'll take back the gavel. I know that that was a difficult decision and I appreciate the support for that motion. And I think that our, our residents are going to appreciate what we've done here tonight.
Can we also just have a motion about items B, C, and D?
All right, hold on. Let me get my stuff back again. All right, so we're on six one, six aye. Staff to submit to the property appraiser, public hearing dates Tuesday, September 13th at 5:05 and Tuesday, September 20th at 5:05 in this room. And administrative adjustments to establish the funding, administrative adjustments to establish funding for the 2023. Do I have a motion to approve six aye, one B, C, and D?
So moved.
I have a motion by, I mean, I have a, yeah, a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed, show that as approved six to zero. All right. I think we've earned our pay today. Let's move on to board appointments. Anybody, let's start with Commissioner Sacks. Do you have a board appointment?
None.
Okay, Commissioner Bernard?
None.
Commissioner Kerner?
None.
Commissioner McKinley?
None.
Commissioner Vice Mayor?
Thank you. All right. On behalf of District Four, the mayor would like to appoint Heidi Schaefer to the Advisory Commission on Women and Sophie Gaeta to the Aviation Airports Advisory Board.
I have a second. I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed, that is unanimous. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
On, on my, for my, for District Two, we would, I'm requesting a reappointment of Bruce Pelley to the Aviation Airports Advisory Board, the reappointment of Jana Panerides to the Commission on Women and to appoint Hank Powsky to the Fair Housing and Equal Employment Board.
I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed, six to zero. Okay, Administrator comments? I think you have something you would like to announce to us, County Administrator?
Yes, based on the board's directive, based on the late hour, I'm going to ask the board to receive and file the directives.
We have a motion, a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All, all in favor, all opposed, it is six to zero.
Also, I give you, passed out a notice to you just recently regarding the ratification of Jennifer Cirillo as our Director of Parks and Recreation. As we are aware, Mr. Eric Call is retiring at the end of September. And Jennifer has been an outstanding person that has been a leader, not only in the Parks and Rec Department, but she was also tapped when we needed to transition our Head Start program. And she was just phenomenal in handling the employees and making that transition very smooth. It could have been an ugly transition, but thanks to her leadership, her skill sets and working with people, she was able to make that happen. So I am asking you to ratify this appointment. Jennifer will overlap Eric for about a couple of months until he walks out of the door. And we will bring Eric and thank him very much for his time at a later date to the board.
I'm looking for a motion to ratify.
So moved.
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor, all opposed, six to zero. Anybody who sticks out to 5:20 deserves to be ratified.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of County Commissioners. We have a fantastic team in Parks and Recreation. It is an honor to step into this leadership role for them. We've only had three other directors in our 50-year department history and I'm the first woman, so that's not lost on me. I appreciate that very much. And special thanks to my family, my mentors, Administrator Baker, Dorit Miller. Eric Call, he has big shoes to fill, both literally and figuratively. So I'm going to do my best. We have some opportunities and challenges ahead and I'm ready to get to work. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. And Eric, we thank you for the challenge coins you left for us. Okay, I think we're almost there. County Attorney, you got anything to say?
I have one other thing, if you don't mind, Mayor.
No, that's it. You're done. You, you take a breath, you're done.
First of all, I would like to congratulate Commissioner McKinley. She concluded her term on the FAC Executive Committee. She served as president during the COVID and completed her duties as immediate past president. Commissioner McKinley received the Marlene Young Award, which we are very proud of. Her award, Marlene was elected to the Polk County Commission in 1988 and gained the reputation of being a lioness of the commission and warrior for good government by her colleagues and community. Qualities Commissioner McKinley is acknowledged for by FAC. Vice Mayor Weiss was recognized by FAC Small County Coalition with the Outstanding Leadership Award. He, along with his colleagues across the state, are committed to ensuring quality, high-speed internet access to all Floridians. He is passionate about closing the digital gap and we all know that here in Palm Beach County because he was one of our biggest supporters when it came to broadband. Vice Mayor Weiss, Bernard, Kerner, Marino, and McKinley received the 2021, I'm sorry, the 2122 FAC Presidential Advocacy Award. This award is presented to leader volunteers who help to guide the FAC advocacy efforts throughout the year. Our Community Services Department was recognized for their programs in two categories, best practice and innovation. First, receiving the Human Services Best Practice Award for the Mobile Outreach Unit. The Mobile Outreach Unit was launched to ensure seniors, the disabled and low-income individuals who had language barriers, lacked computers or computer skills, were able to access emergency rental and utility assistance. Two other programs received Best Practice Award number nations, the Community Recovery Hub and the Needle Exchange Program. The Second Community Services Award also received the Human Services Innovation Award for the Data Integration System. The data exchange was designed primarily to improve services to people, but also to improve the ability of workers who perform their job and support management decisions. Palm Beach County's partnership with Legal Aid Services also received an Innovation Award number nation. And I'd like to thank the board for your support and conclude my, I also concluded my term as the Florida Association of County Managers' President. So thank you. I'd like to ask James, because I think they stood around, along with his staff and Archie and his staff to come up because we actually created a lot of this during COVID. And sitting in a conference room saying, okay, we got to get out to the people, coming up with the ideas, and these guys actually made it happen. Our ISS Department is outstanding. They are far and above others and are also our Human Services Department. They are committed to serving the residents of our county.
We don't have a photographer here, so I guess.
Todd's got it.
Todd's on it. Okay, thank you. We are certainly in an award-winning county and I congratulate everybody, our staff, our county administrator, our, our colleagues here, everybody who makes this a special place to live, work, and play. All right, we're almost done. Commissioner comments? I'm going to start with Commissioner Weiss. No, let me start with Commissioner Kerner.
All right, very briefly, thank you for a wonderful day of public policymaking. My staff is kind enough to decorate my folder every meeting with with an appropriate, so it says it's, it's millage time. But in light of the motion passing lowering the millage, I'm going to ask them to change it to millage light.
There you go. I like that. I like that.
For the September meeting. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Sacks?
I like that. I like, that was good, Commissioner Kerner. I have a quick remarks about the, it was a good, very good meeting today and this is what we're here for, making these difficult decisions. On September 28th, colleagues, we're going to have a Veterans Benefit Affair at the South County Civic Center. And the head of the Florida Department of Veteran Affairs is going to be here. He will meet, all of us will have an opportunity to meet with him as well as he will. I have requested that he meet with our county agencies to see how the state and federal government can help our homeless veterans and can help any way possible to reach out to our residents with state and federal money. So you'll be getting information on this September 28th event. It should be something that would be very beneficial to, to all our residents and especially to our veterans.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner McKinley?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two items I'd like to give staff direction to. The first one is we approved early this morning, feels like yesterday, an item on the consent agenda, passing a resolution supporting the appropriation projects that Congresswoman Lois Frankel put forward. I'd like to give staff direction, we discussed it yesterday in Agenda Review, to reach out to the other three members of our congressional delegation and do the same for any projects that they put forward. I know that Congresswoman Sherfyllis McCormick had three or four that were Palm Beach County specific. And so just ask that they put that resolution together and bring it back to us quickly so we can support all of our congressional members, Palm Beach County projects.
Without objection. Did the county administrator hear that direction?
Todd, Todd heard it, so we're good.
Okay. Mr. Bonlaren, it's on your shoulders now.
The second staff direction, I met with a public defender. She is putting together a grant application with the Department of Justice that would provide targeted reentry services for those coming out of the county jail out in Belglade. And she has asked for a letter of support when that grant application is submitted. So just give staff direction to draft that letter of support.
That's it?
Well, I think you have to say without objection.
Oh, yeah. What, what she said.
Okay. Then the last thing on the budget, I met with Bob Burdish yesterday from the Legal Aid Society and I would ask that staff give his office a call. They need some help continuing to fund the wage theft program. It might be a very minimal increase that they need to continue that. But in light of the budget, we just passed, hey, don't know that that's possible. Yeah, so it's kind of like parking. Anyhow, if, if we could reach out to Mr. Burdish and see exactly what it is they need, I would appreciate that.
Without objection.
Thank you all for supporting my five years on the executive board of the association. It's been quite an honor. It's been a family. So thank you. And thank you for everybody who is there. I actually had no idea that that was coming. Was completely surprised. And everybody else seemed to know about it. Lisa D actually picked my outfit out that day. So thank you, Lisa. Have a great, have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations again. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. On behalf of District Four, I'd like to request an off-site certificate of commendation for special spaces.
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed, show that as five to zero. Commissioner Bernard having to excuse himself.
And a couple of things I'd like to share is, number one, the, the Office of Broadband released their strategic plan for Florida's broadband expansion and I will be happy to share that with you all and send, have that sent around to your offices. So if you are trying to fall asleep at night, you can peruse that document. But I do appreciate the, the opportunity for Florida Association's counties to take a role in helping to at least have, have our voices heard as they were crafting that. Also, I want to shout out to Fire Rescue. I had the opportunity last week, and I hope I get this right, Chief. It was a, it put, they brought in service a truck, which we would think of as a ladder truck, but because of its configuration, it's referred to in the fire service as a truck. And they had the pushback ceremony, which was very, it's a, it's a wonderful thing to watch and they explain the history behind it. But the important part of this really is the fact that our board continues to recognize the need to fund and properly equip our fire rescue personnel to make sure that they have the tools when our residents and businesses need them that can help save lives, keep our property safe. And, and so it's, it is housed out near Royal Palm Beach, but it, it'll be utilized in, I guess, in sort of a regional way. So really to help residents throughout the county. And I believe there's plans afoot for other vehicles similar to this. But it was the first one of this kind. It's got a 100-foot ladder on it. So, I mean, it can reach places and I saw them demonstrate it do things like, I mean, it could help if somebody, if a vehicle went in the water, they could, they can drop this ladder. It can actually drop below the level of the truck itself. And so it can reach out into, into the water. It could reach out over on top of a building. I mean, there's a lot of things that this is going to provide the opportunity to help, help. So congratulations to our fire rescue and I know that it'll be well utilized. And then lastly, I just, I want to take a moment to thank my colleagues. We've, obviously, we had a long day. We had a lot of decisions to make that were, we came at it from different ways, but I really always respect my colleagues working together to, you know, we, we don't all, we definitely don't always agree, but we are able to come to a decision and to move forward in the way we all best think it's going to, our county's going to be served. And I admire you all for the positions you all take. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I'll keep it short and sweet so we can go home. Let's talk about parking. All right, no parking. All right. Anyway, thank you, everybody. It's been a good meeting. I think, as the Vice Mayor said, it's been a challenge, but I think we, we met the challenge and I think our residents will appreciate the work we did here today. With that, we're adjourned.